Lee Summit is your destination for big city vibes and small town charm. Head to the downtown Lee Summit Farmers Market where local meets fresh. Then grab a cup of coffee and discover a variety of shops and boutiques just around the corner. Continue the fun in downtown Lee Summit at a retro arcade bar. Discover your new beer at one of our six locally owned breweries. Cool off with some handcrafted cocktails at happy hour. End the night with live music and good company. Lee Summit, Missouri.
Hello, Lee Summit. Here's your flash briefing for the week of May 13th. City Council will meet for a regular session Tuesday night at 6:00 in council chambers in City Hall. If you can't watch, quickly catch up on city council meetings by subscribing to the Council debrief newsletter, which breaks down three to four key agenda items. Subscribe at cityofls.net. A reminder, today is the community blood drive at the city's maintenance facility from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. The community blood center is in urgent need of blood and all presenting donors will receive a box of Girl Scout cookies and a $10 gift card. What a sweet treat. Sign up today on the city's website. Walk-ins are welcome. In road news, starting today, May 13th, infrastructure work will require the closure at the intersection of Second and Green Streets for approximately two weeks and the permanent closure of Green Street between City Hall and Third Street. Access to the City Hall parking garage will be from the alley on the west side of the garage. Find more information at cityofls.net. And then some good news for you on this Monday morning. If you hadn't noticed already, Northwest Chipman Road from Douglas to Donovan is now open to traffic. Thanks for listening and have a great week.
Traditionally, we think as police officers, those responding to law enforcement needs within the community. But honestly, we are there to serve our citizens and our citizens do go into crises. They do have mental health crises and we're being called to those scenes on a regular basis. In order to help serve those citizens better, we did initiate the Crisis Intervention Team Program. These are officers that are specially trained to de-escalate crisis situations. Recently, we've brought co-responders onto the scene, licensed qualified mental health professionals housed within our police department. And they respond with those officers directly to those scenes where a crisis is occurring so they can interact with that citizen and get them the help they need right there on that scene.
The co-responders are either a bachelor or master level in a behavioral health related field. They wear plain clothes. They don't carry weapons or anything like that.
I have a police radio that I listen to all day, listen for, you know, those keywords, mental health, behavioral health, crisis.
There's a lot of officers that just call for me. I have my own radio number.
I also have the ability to self-dispatch to them when, say, 982, send route.
Officers in route, 914, armed for assault.
So typically I arrive after they've made it safe. I'll make contact and get kind of the rundown and then I just kind of jump right in.
Like, hey, you know, my name's Allison. I'm a mental health professional. I'm here to help you. I'm not here to take you to jail or arrest you.
Sometimes, all a person needs is a voice, someone neutral, someone outside that, you know, can listen. I do a lot of safety planning, including family, their support network, who's close to you? If they're home alone, who can come over and hang out with you today? Can we lock away your sharps? Can we put up your meds? Do you need meds? Can we get you over to the urgent care to get you assessed for your medications? Some of them also are like, oh, I'm so glad you came. This made me feel so much better.
Our main goal as co-responders is to, one, get people connected to the services that they need and also divert from emergency rooms and jails.
And they almost get a different view of the police responding. That lets me know you care and the officers care.
Lee Summit Police, can we help you?
My husband has...
In 2020, we had 722 mental health related calls for service. 2022, by that time, 1,479. These mental health related calls for service are increasing. How responding to that is increasing the number of Crisis Intervention Team officers we have available as well as the number of co-responders we have available to respond on these calls.
So what I think is important for the community to know about the co-responder program is that we're here, we exist. All you have to do when you call 911 is ask for us, you know, say, hey, I want a co-responder to respond to this crisis and we'll go. I was really struggling about eight years ago, my personal journey with mental health and I met some amazing social workers and amazing programs that have helped me get to where I am today. I really couldn't see myself doing anything else. We want to help and that's what we love to do.
So at a client, we got a call, she had some suicidal ideations and she really felt that she had nobody. And, you know, in getting to know her story, getting to know who comes around and sees you, well, then we found a support person and they responded immediately and we made a plan. I called back and checked on her in an hour and then I checked on her in two hours. We were able to get her into additional services to where she talks to someone every week or more. I just took a person that really just thought they had nobody and nobody would show up for them and show them you do. And you'll be amazed who is in your corner if you just simply say, I need a little help.
I'm Assistant Chief Jim Eden.
And I'm Battalion Chief Ben Hicks.
And today, we're at Lee Summit Fire Station 3. Fire Station 3 was part of the 2016 No Tax Increase General Obligation Bond for Public Safety Initiatives. The station was built and occupied in August of 2020. Unfortunately, due to the pandemic, we've not been able to give tours or have an actual ribbon cutting. So we want to invite you in today to give you the opportunity to see what goes on within the Lee Summit Fire Department station.
Let's go take a tour. This is our admin side of the facility. We use this side mainly for offices. We have a lot of work during the day, whether it's training or doing reports or just generally taking care of the shift that we need to do. At this particular station, Station 3, we do have an assistant chief that works out of here. That person has their own office where they need to manage what's going on throughout the day with the shift and staffing and as well as running calls out of here. The captain has their own office as well. What the captain does is, at this specific station, is in charge of both the fire truck that's here as well as the ambulance. And so with all those personnel responsibilities as well as running calls and reports, that's where they work out of. And generally, for the rest of the crew, which is somewhere around five to six individuals, we have rooms where I report and we have additional training rooms and other rooms where people can work. Walking into our living area, I think it's important to recognize that we work 48-hour shifts. So in the evenings, after 5:00, after work is done, we may have the opportunity to catch a game or something else as long as we're not running calls. And this gives us the opportunity to do that. When we go into our kitchen, I think this gives you a great reason to know why we go to the grocery store when you see fire trucks at the grocery store, what we're doing. Also, for two days, working for 48 hours, we buy all our meals at the grocery store and then we come in here and cook just like you guys do at home. So everybody has their own fridge on each shift as well as their own pantry and then we cook those meals here. Going into the sleeping side of things, we've got a couple of different things that are significant. We have our own laundry room, which again is important when we're here for 48 hours. The opportunity to wash and clean our clothes and bedding is very important for hygiene. And walking into where our beds are, we keep the kind of sleeping quarters over on one side of the building. It gives us both easy access out to where our fire apparatus are as well as kind of keeping it a little bit quieter for those people that have been up all night running calls. We have 11 bedrooms here at this station. And the reason we built it with so many bedrooms is we want to give ourselves as a city the opportunity to expand. So if we need to put another apparatus here or numerous other people working out of the station that's already in place as far as infrastructure goes and we don't need to go back and try to make it bigger or better. And that's really important for us, especially because the old station was so small. Back out on the apparatus floor, we have doors facilitated as many places as possible so that way when we're sleeping at night and a call comes out, we can make our way out fairly quickly to get out onto the truck if we need to and run a call. On the other side of the station, we kind of have other stuff that we may want to keep separated if we want to. Physical fitness is very important to us as firefighters. So in order to better ourselves and make sure we're as healthy as we can to do this job, we have our own gym facility here that we kind of go throughout the day when we came and get an opportunity to come in and work out. Our goal, when we run calls and we get back to the station after calls, our goal is to get ready to go back as soon as we can to run another call. So we have the opportunity or capability here to fill up our air tanks. You see firefighters, where the big air tanks on their backs and they use those in a fire, we can come back and fill those up and make sure that we're ready to go again when we're wanting to go run another call. We have our own workshop here. We work on a lot of our tools and making sure that everything's clean and operational and this gives us the capability to do that, again, to make sure that we have everything we need and we're as capable as we can be to run a call throughout the city. Cancer prevention is very important in the fire service right now. Because of that, we have an extractor machine. And what this does is gives us the capability, when we come back from a fire, we can put our bunker gear into this machine and get all that really nasty crud off of our gear. Again, kind of getting back to that cancer prevention mode, allowing us to be as clean as we possibly can for the next call. Finally, is our bunker gear room. We each have our own individual locker. This gives us the opportunity to store our gear when we're not here working in between shifts as well as keep a clean extra set on here in case we do run a fire and we need to clean our current gear. Typically, this is where your day starts off at the fire station. You come in and get your gear and put it on wherever you're working that day and then you end the same way, bringing your stuff back to your locker to go home after working. This is Med 3. This ambulance just currently moved into the station from Station 7. Station 3, since we've had it built, has turned into one of our busiest stations in the city therefore. We wanted to provide the best care and the closest units we could. So we moved one of our ambulances up and this became Med 3 for this particular instance. Out of this station, we also have Pumper 3 and that's the fire apparatus that they utilize to run the calls on this west end of the city. The last vehicle that you see is the chief's vehicle. We have two shift chiefs on shift every day and they split the city. And this chief running out of this station typically covers the west and south area of the city while our chief at Station 2 covers kind of that northeast section of our city and they divide it up evenly.
Thank you for going on a tour with us today. If you have any other questions about the Lee Summit Fire Department, please go to our webpage at lsfire.net or follow us on Facebook at Lee Summit Fire Department.
Thanks for joining us on the tour.
I really love living in our historic downtown. I walk my dog around the shops, take her for... You know, they do pub cups at Poppy's so you can get ice cream with a little dog biscuit in it, which is her favorite thing in the world. My neighbors, we have block parties together. I just, I really like how welcoming and how vibrant it is. It's an amazing place to live. Lee Summit's a really great community. I love living here and I just wanted to try to find a way to give back, look out for my neighbors, for the community. I've always tried to be involved. Before serving on city council, I used to volunteer with AFS, which is an organization that hosts foreign exchange students. So my husband and I have hosted kids from around the world and then also volunteered with local families and schools. In my professional life, I'm a paralegal and then in my personal life, I enjoy reading, sewing. I'm a quilter, so I just finished a log cabin quilt that I'm going to send to my aunt out in DC. I can't claim any of our council accomplishments for myself. This is always a team effort. But I am really excited about the farmers market and event space that we have coming in. It's still in the design phases, but I think it's going to be a really beautiful space and it's going to really continue keeping our downtown thriving. It's been in progress for a long time, but I think that people are going to really love it when it's done. I think one of my top priorities is going to be attainable housing that, for example, I've been trying to find a place for my mom in Lee Summit. And it's really challenging finding something that really works for a retiree who doesn't have a huge budget, just trying to make it more attainable for people no matter where they're at in their lives to be a part of our community. Community is what we make it. Everybody should get involved in whatever way they can, whether that's just voting or whether it's joining a board or a commission or even running for office. What do they say? The world is run by those who show up. So get involved however you can and make a difference in the community.
All right, I think we're ready. Can you please rise for the invocation and the pledge of allegiance?
Heavenly Father, thank you for the blessings for this community, the community that we call home. Guide us in our decisions and help us rise to the tasks ahead of us. As we focus on our duty to our community, may we share our commitment with our neighbors. Amen.
Welcome, everyone. I'd like to call the meeting for May 14th, the city council regular session, to order. Can we please have roll call?
Councilmember Hodges.
Here.
Councilmember Pryor. Councilmember Shields.
Here.
Councilmember Lovell.
Here.
Councilmember Rader.
Here.
Councilmember Carlisle.
Present.
Councilmember DeMaro.
Here.
Mayor Protem Lopez.
Here.
Mayor Baird.
All right, thank you. We will do a little bit of agenda management if we can here. If you can bear with me for a second. Items 8A and B, with the mayor not being here tonight and I believe we have some other council reps that won't be here next week. I'd like to go ahead and have full participation with the mayor and the full council. So I'd like to postpone those as long as we need to postpone them within the certain timeframe, Mr. Dunn.
So those are not public hearings. We don't need to have a date certain on those. We can just make sure that we have the full council here if that's the desire to postpone these and we can put those on an agenda that works, understanding, I guess, next week, Councilmember Lovell may not be here. So that would not be a good meeting. We'll look to that meeting after that to coordinate this.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Yeah, so moving along, I am not Mayor Baird. I'm a pinch hitter tonight, so nice to see you guys here. And we'll proceed with the agenda with the approval of the consent agenda. Can we get a motion, please? Oh, approve the agenda with the change I made. Can we get a motion? Oh, there it is. I got it. So we have a motion made by Councilmember DeMaro and a second by Councilmember Shields. Any discussion or questions? If not, please cast your vote. Okay, votes are made. Please record it. Motion passes. Thank you. Takes us to now approval of the consent agenda. Can we get a motion, please? We have a motion then by Councilmember Shields and we have a second by Councilmember Hodges. If there's no questions or comments, please cast your vote. Okay, all votes are in. We have eight yes and one absent, so motion passes. Thank you. Takes us to council roundtable. Anybody wishing to talk tonight? Councilmember Pryor.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I just wanted to say thank you to Officer Price for his heroic actions last week. And then, oh, if you haven't watched the mashup for May, I watched it and it's a Saved by the Bell theme and it's really good, so I think everyone should watch it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yeah, Councilmember Carlisle.
Thank you. I just wanted to congratulate our upcoming graduates and also those who have already graduated from college. I had a good friend graduate on Mother's Day, so that was my Mother's Day present and so congratulations to him and all the other graduates out there.
Nice, thank you. She stole my thunder. Anyone else? So I also wanted to graduate or congratulate everyone that's graduated. It's that time of year. We had a couple in our house, so it was a busy weekend, last weekend. But also belated Happy Mother's Day to everyone in the room and everybody watching. So hopefully you guys had a nice Mother's Day. Councilmember Lovell, do you take care of your wife? Did you buy her a gift? Okay, all right, good. Good answer. Good answer. This is being recorded. All right, where are we? All right, takes us to proclamations. It's going to be a fun night. So, yeah, so normally the mayor will read them. I'm going to have our clerk read them tonight for me. So if you could, please, and, yeah, Mark Dunn, you can do it. First, we will have National Police Week. If you guys can come up maybe close to the front and I'll come down and meet you guys.
This proclamation is for National Police Week. Whereas federal, state, local, and tribal police officers, sheriffs, and other law enforcement officers across the United States serve with valor, dignity, and integrity. And whereas law enforcement officers swear an oath to uphold the public trust even though through the performance of the duties of law enforcement officer, the officers may become targets for senseless acts of violence. And whereas in 1962, President John Fitzgerald Kennedy signed Public Law 87-726, referred to in this preamble as the Joint Resolution, which authorizes the president to proclaim May 15th of every year as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of the federal, state, and local officers who have been killed, disabled, or otherwise injured in the line of duty. And whereas the Joint Resolution also authorizes the president to designate the week in which Peace Officers Memorial Day falls as National Police Week. And whereas the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial dedicated on October 15th, 1991, and is the national monument to honor those law enforcement officers who have died in the line of duty. And whereas Peace Officers Memorial Day 2024 honors the 136 law enforcement officers killed in the line of duty in 2023, including three Missouri officers and most recently Officer Cody Allen of the Independence Police Department in February of 2024. Now therefore, I, not me, but William Baird, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Lee Summit, Missouri, do hereby proclaim the week of May 12th through May 18th, 2024, as National Police Week.
Thank you very much for doing that. All right, obviously, this community, all of you and those that can't be here tonight. So thank you for being here tonight and I'll make a comment after Chief Forbes talks.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I told these folks how much I enjoy council and they decided to come with me tonight. Now, most of these folks are from our midnight shift who work in the wee hours in the morning when a lot of us are sleeping, so... I wish there was a year where we didn't have a name to mention. Our award ceremony is Friday at 4:00 p.m. at Legacy Christian Church. We've combined it with a bit of a memorial service department as well. Officer Hartman's family members will be there, so that's always special for us. I'll go ahead and start with Captain Murray.
Captain Mike Murray.
Scott Lyles.
Officer Brandon Meyer.
Officer Clayton Majors.
Officer David Stanley.
Officer Hunter Peterson.
Officer Nathan Minehan.
Officer Cole.
Officer Thomas Snagenberg.
Officer Joshua Wilson.
Sergeant Aaron Evans.
Officer Joshua Cox.
Officer Jason Radel.
Officer Amay Chidry.
Sergeant Casey Blystone.
Sergeant Kevin Dibbin.
Kerry Colan.
My steps in. So thank you all again for being here and for what you do and those that are not here, please pass that word on to everyone else and I'm sure some of them are watching. But on behalf of the city council and the mayor, just want to acknowledge that again and we appreciate you. We keep you guys in our prayers every night and greatly value you and what you mean to... and what you mean to this community, so thank you, guys. All right, another applause, please. Take a photo? Somehow? But we do have another one. We also have a proclamation for National Public Works Day, or Week, which is for May 10th, or May 19th through the 25th. So if you guys, whoever's here representing Public Works, come on up.
Ready?
Yes, please.
All right, whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and the services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities, and to the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of Lee's Summit, and whereas these infrastructure, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals, who are engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of government and the private sector, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid-based systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens, and whereas it is in the public interest for citizens, civic leaders, and children in Lee's Summit to gain knowledge of and to maintain an ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in their respective communities, and whereas the year 2024 marks the 64th Annual National Public Works Week, sponsored by the American Public Works Association, and this year's theme is Advancing Quality of Life for All. Now therefore, I, on behalf of William A. Baird, by virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of Lee's Summit, Missouri, do hereby proclaim May 19th through 25th, 2024, as National Public Works Week.
Again, just like I stated with our law enforcement personnel, you all are behind the scenes, helping this community with having the high quality of life that we experience, and so for that, we're super grateful. And I'll be off, behalf of the council and the mayor, just thank you again for what you do, and, out to ballgame or something? Yeah, if you can please introduce yourself.
Thank you, Mike Anderson, Deputy Director of Public Works Operations. On behalf of Public Works and possibly Water Utilities, Mark, you can always add to this, I do appreciate the recognition. You're right, we do work behind the scenes, whether it be designing and building the public infrastructure that, you know, provides this quality of life that we've come accustomed to, or be it maintaining and operating those systems. You know, everything we do takes a very dedicated group of people that work tirelessly behind the scenes. We like to work behind the scenes, because if people see us, it's typically because there's a problem. So it is nice to be recognized when things are going well, so thank you for that. There will be a few activities going on next week. We'll have a lunch for our employees on Wednesday to say thank you, and then also we kind of grab and go breakfast for some of the departments, so be on the lookout for an invitation just to say thank you to the folks that support us, and you may see us wearing crazy socks and hats for Spirit Week, so.
Susan Berry, City Traffic Engineer.
Karen Allison, Senior Staff Engineer.
Perry Allen, Construction Manager.
Mark Stinson, Fleet Manager.
Ron Painter, CIP Inspector.
Jeremy Young, Assistant Director of Water Operations.
Mark Schoffler, Director of Water Utilities.
Tom Bennett, Assistant Director of Customer Care, Water Utilities, likes seeing the more tap water also. Drink from the tap.
Best water in the region. That's what he said last week. So, thank you again, on behalf of the council and the mayor, thank you all again. It's one time we have the opportunity to tell you how grateful we are, we do appreciate you all, and we have investors that come into our community, but you all are behind the scenes are what's allowing us to expand, and so I know we have a lot of that going on right now, so enjoy your week. Thank you. Do you have a photo? So that takes us to the agenda for public comments, and I believe we have a couple. So, bear with me one second. First one we have is Ms. Teresa Volenweider. So, come on up, please, state your name and address.
I want to first show the document that I showed last week, but I want you to be sure to see it. Landscape, this is right-of-way, and what's allowed and what's not. Landscaping, see note one, allowed use in right-of-way. Note one includes smaller plantings or ground-level landscape beds, small gardens, small flower beds, and small decorative rocks. I'd certainly appreciate it if someone would let my neighbor know that, but just to qualify it, I was never planting those things in the right-of-way. I was on my own property. I've said this many times, it's what I learned in one of my survey courses, Legal Aspects of Boundary Control. The plan is merely a picture, the survey is the substance. It's what's on the ground that matters. So, somebody came out and put it on the ground, there is a pink mark right here that you can't see very well on this overhead, and so somebody actually put the right-of-way line there, and they put a little dot over here to show the center line of the road. Where I was planting was right in here, and this is the quarter-quarter line, my fence line follows that quarter-quarter line, it separates the southeast quarter from the northeast quarter of Section 6, Township 48, Range 31. And if you were to think about where those two lines would intersect, they would be over here on this side of that power pole, which would be on the west side of that power pole. That is where Cheryl Associates Incorporated, that did my Ulta survey, marked the intersection of the right-of-way with the quarter-quarter line. Now Mayor Baird signed this ordinance to rezone this property that is my neighbor's at 5261. A couple of the documents mentioned in here, maps, notices, survey, all attachments of record, what were used, for Brant Ladwig's survey, Ladwig Associates, and Matthew Schliss's site plan. That's Brant Ladwig's survey. Some concerning things about these documents. Brant Ladwig's survey, signed and sealed, 2117. Yet on August 18th, 2017, several months later, he is telling Randy Deal of the county, "I am in kind of a bind on a survey that I've been working on, and any help you could provide would be greatly appreciated."
Ms. Volenweider, so I have three minutes on my clock, on my watch, so are we close? I can't see the other one.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'll give you a couple seconds to finish your statement.
Okay. With this particular document, the concern is, there are no revisions shown, and he's saying he's still working on it, yet he signed and sealed it on February 2nd, 2017. The city accepted it on 11/01/2017. The concern becomes, did the city ask him to make revisions, and then he didn't note those revisions on that survey?
All right, thank you. We do have another person that's signed up to speak tonight in public comments, and that is Mr. Lester Masood. I hope I'm pronouncing that right. Good.
I've definitely heard it pronounced much worse. Mayor Protem, and members of the council, I want to thank you for letting me speak. My name is Lester Masood. I currently live at 701 Southeast Basil Court here in the City of Lee's Summit. I am the designated agent for a company called Lynn Oak Court Company, and it has the Summit East Plaza Apartments here in Lee's Summit. I am not here to talk about an issue that we will talk about next week, but I would like to ask the city, why they don't use designated agents when they serve legal notices? That is the purpose of having the state, that requires us all to have a designated agent to serve legal notices and paperwork, and the City of Lee's Summit is not doing that. I've asked the people at the city staffers, and I've asked, I've reached out to many of you for help on who actually sends this information out, and where it's supposed to be sent, and what is the procedure? Because it has broken down, and I need to know why it broke down. I've tried to reach out to many of you before, many of you, and the standard I'm hearing is that you cannot talk to me, because this is an issue that's up for vote soon, but I have spent, I spent five years walking around the halls of Jefferson City, talking to senators, congressmen, committees, I've testified in multiple houses, and multiple House meetings, and multiple senates, and talked about issues that were up, and talked them in person about issues that were up for vote. So I don't understand why you can't talk to us, the citizens of Lee's Summit, but it appears that you can talk to the city staffers, and probably even the applicants in the process. So I don't know why, and I'd like to know where it's supposed to get served, and why I can't talk to you. I'd also like to know if the City of Lee's Summit is doing anything to promote the development of affordable housing within its city limits, and seeing what they're doing, if they're requiring that in any of the new developments that are going on. Thank you for your time, and if you have any questions, I'm available.
Thank you, appreciate it. Appreciate the statements made tonight. So that takes us to agenda item number six, which we have before us, we're gonna have two different presentations from two very high-profile, pretty exciting projects, both, and so it's kind of a unique situation for us. We have a process, correct? Mr. Bushak?
Yes, David Bushak, Chief Counsel of Economic Development and Planning. I will go ahead and introduce both of these items. I'll have some introductory comments about the nature of these presentations before we get into either presentation. Just some of, this is mostly a reminder to the City Council, but we have a couple new council members, one returning, one new, and so this is a bit of a refresher for the conceptual presentations that we're going to hear tonight. This is a process that is in the city's economic development incentive policy. It's unique to Lee's Summit. I'm not aware of any other city that offers this opportunity to developers to present to you their project in a conceptual fashion before you formally hear the incentive request. So this is just the conceptual presentations tonight for both projects. You're not taking a vote, you're not taking a binding vote on either of these projects. The typical process is, the City Council provides feedback to each applicant, provides benefit to the developer to know if they can move forward with confidence on their incentive request or not, depending on your feedback to them. Also provides useful feedback to city staff, because we hear what your comments are, and we take that into account in our negotiations and in the preparation for bringing these incentive requests forward, if that is ultimately your direction. The mayor typically encourages feedback from all council members, so we, as staff, we would encourage your feedback tonight, so we know where you stand with both incentive requests, and so we have guidance to city staff to move forward. As I mentioned, there's no formal decision. The feedback that you're providing is not binding, that's a question that comes up from time to time, but you're free to vote however you see fit, one, the applications are actually in front of you, and whatever feedback you provide tonight is not a vote, and it's not binding. Although I will say, we've had a good track record between the feedback that the City Council's provided at the conceptual stage, and the ultimate decisions that are rendered by the City Council when the incentive requests actually come forward. I think we've had a good track record and good consistency between this level of feedback, and then the decisions that are made at a later date. Reminder that we're operating at a conceptual level, so there's a lot of questions we can answer, but there'll be a lot of questions that we probably can't, when you, if we, depending on the level of detail that we get into with the numbers and the calculations and so forth, so we'll do our best to answer all of your questions, but some of them naturally come later in the process, since this is the conceptual presentation. The last thing that I will note is, as you're aware, both of these projects are seeking the fieldhouse, which would be a Parks Department asset. Obviously, the fieldhouse can only go in one place in the city. So as city staff, we've been very neutral regarding which project proceeds first, which is why we have both of these presentations on the same night, and we actually planned, keeping up the idea of fair and impartiality, we're going to do a coin flip to see who goes first, and we still haven't flipped the coin. I've got the ceremonial flipping coin here.
He wanted me to make that call, I'm not making that call, so thank you.
So, I'll ask the Drake team to go ahead and call it. This is Ted? Ted? So, the first, that was the official coin flip, that may be a first here. Lisa McCrossing will go first with their presentation, so with that, I will pull up their presentation, and we will begin. So the first presentation is Lisa McCrossing, which was formerly known as Shamrock, and I'll go ahead and say before we begin, it's very likely that I, at some point, will call this project Shamrock, because you've heard it as Shamrock in the past, but from this point forward, it's Lisa McCrossing, and I'll do my best to use that name of the project, and we'll start with the developer's presentation.
Thanks, David. Was that surreal? Let's just be real, we do this all the time. Was that bizarre to see David flipping a coin in front of the council? That was, I mean, come on, let's just say it out loud. That was fun. Yeah, I felt like it was the Chiefs game or something. It is royal season. I do have the flag flying in front of my house, that's true. My name is Kurt Peterson. It's a pleasure to be in front of this body, Mayor Protem, council members. I'm here on behalf of the developer, which I'll introduce in a minute. I think this is a very impressive, really, I'll call it multi-specialty development team, that's proposing to make this transformative investment in the city. I'd like to take a moment to share with you, for some of this is, again, share with you, but share with you the components of the development team, as I point behind me. So first, giving you your reading material on the screen as well, the lead master developer is 635 Holdings, the CEO is Rob Heineman, who's here, here on the end. Rob has 25 years, more than 25 years really, of experience developing and operating, and really over half a million dollars in entertainment, sports, and mainly hospitality projects in the Kansas City area, so that's Rob. We have a lead of construction, which is Luke Draley, who is someone that I know many of you recognize. Bob Becker, the CEO, is here, sitting just in the second row. Example of Bob, just because to be close to home here, he was the one that built Echelon, not far from this site, just to the west. Echelon Apartments, just a stone's throw away from there. Echelon Apartments, just a stone's throw away from there. You'll see the high quality of his work in some example imagery I'm going to flash up in a moment. That's our lead of construction. Lead of retail and restaurant development is Elevate Property Advisors. Jeff Berg, one of their principals, is here, sitting next to Rob. Jeff is hands-down, in my professional experience, in almost two decades working in this industry here in Kansas City, is one of the most successful retail brokers and developers in Kansas City. Much of his success comes from, really, the respected relationships he develops with our local, regional, national businesses, retailers, restaurants, we're talking Target, Costco, Chick-fil-A, and many more, that he represents. They look to him to figure out where to go in this market. I've personally heard from several of you, I won't call out names, but you've been very specific about, "Look, Kurt, there's a lot of opportunity here. Can we see some restaurants particularly, but assumedly retails businesses, that we haven't seen in other places, right?" And I just want you to know that Jeff Berg is the expert. We certainly don't invent new restaurants, if you know what I mean. We can't make them come somewhere, but anything that's possible and attainable for this project, Jeff Berg will find it. So I wanted to introduce you to Jeff. Then finally, lead of residential development is TriStar Properties. You've seen at, well, most of you have seen at the prior meetings we've held together, that I've had a TriStar principal that's been here in the first or second row. Tonight, they had a scheduling conflict, but nonetheless, I wanted to remind you, they have done over a billion dollars in development projects, many of them residential in nature, which is about 15 million square feet of development. And their expertise and ability to deploy capital quickly in specifically residential products of all types is really a valuable part of our team. So even though they're not here, I wanted to reintroduce them to most of you. So quickly, and it will be quickly, but I, we all know it, pictures mean a lot. Just flipping through here, in no particular order, this is all from this team's experience that will be working on this master development. The first two slides, the first you see and the next one, are images from a total rebirth of two major iconic shopping centers in Prairie Village that many of you have probably been to. That is our team, members of our team that handled those. The next after this one is Children's Mercy Park Sporting KC Stadium, that I'm sure everybody's been to. This is ranked in one of the top 100 stadium experiences in the world, if you Google and look into that, and that was also our team. After this, I put up some images of a retail portion of a master development that our team did in O'Fallon, Missouri, called Lakeside Crossing, to give you a sense of some of our retail development. After that, I put up a master-planned single-family development that you can see our team did. This is in Wildwood, Missouri, called Garden Valley. The next two examples after this are medical-related facilities and entertainment space that we did in Wyandotte, that our team did in Wyandotte County, Kansas. So that's the medical-sports space, and then some entertainment space. The next three examples are various multifamily projects that have been done in the Kansas City metro by our team. To go through this quickly, again, giving you a sense of quality and excellence here from the team. And then the last will be a sports and recreation facility, which is actually the U.S. Olympic, you know, the U.S. Soccer Training Facility, I should say, which is located in Kansas City, Kansas, which was also our team. So why did I just go through all that and take up a minute and a half and show you pictures, and even longer, talking about the team? I did it because, for a large part, even though he's not here, he's here in spirit. The mayor, I've heard say, if not once, then, you know, 25 times, "We care about who our partner is when we're proposing a public-private partnership, especially a huge master development like this." So I want you to have the confidence that you have a team in front of you proposing this again tonight, that is highly accomplished, with the kind of experience, including, you know, to the tune of, you know, billion, the B-word, billion dollars of experience in the Kansas City market alone, with large mixed-use projects like this, and knows how to make it a great success. So with that, deep breath, you have a great team that's proposing this project here. So the outline for tonight, I really just have three items to address with you. One will be project themes that really set the table as you wrestle with this and provide feedback. What are the thematic underpinnings for this entire project? It's a huge project. What's it all about? Second, we'll be talking about the specifics about the project, which will include the proposed public-private partnership. And lastly, because this is the third conceptual we've had, and the final one, we want to make sure we demonstrate that we've listened as a project team, and then show you how we've addressed the major concerns that we've heard from the dais. So at this third and final conceptual presentation, after a year and a half, here we are. Number one, project themes. The first big-picture project theme is, really, this land, this very large piece of land will not develop without a major cohesive incentives package. Why? There is too much public infrastructure that's needed to activate, to be able to develop this property. It's too expensive, it's too much. Staff can confirm, they have before, I know many of you know this, you've heard me say this, you've heard staff say this. Others have tried to come in and develop parts of this land, and they've stopped every time. Ask MoDOT, people have had the little MoDOT piece that we will acquire at the edge of this property under contract many times, and then they fail and let it go, because they can't figure out how to deal with all the public infrastructure needs on this site. So really, without something like this, that's taken, again, 18 months to develop, what we'll get is either no development on this property, or we'll get a hodgepodge sort of, I don't know, I call it Swiss cheese, right? You might get, for instance, Sonic. Sonic is at the edge of this property on 150, east of 291. It's the only thing that's there, and frankly, while, again, for all those Sonic lovers, or Sonics listening, we love the business, I can speak for all of you, I'm glad they're here, it, where it's located, because it wasn't part of a master plan, actually causes major problems for us, for our infrastructure, that we've worked hard to work around. So my point is, this is a way, and really the only way, to have a major public infrastructure project like this, and incentives behind it, that can avoid the Swiss cheese. By contrast, this proposed comprehensive structure will activate, key word, activate, a major southern mixed-use node, to the great economic and non-economic benefit of the city, as we'll address here in detail in a minute. So the incentives are primarily for public infrastructure, with the balance for inducing key users to, again, activate this project. The key users are, we'll talk about this, a golf sort of entertainment user called Mammoth, a hotel serving, what we hope will be the fieldhouse on this site, a medical office facility with urgent care and physical therapy, very much, again, fitting in well with the fieldhouse. And then finally, the Parks Fieldhouse itself, if we're lucky enough to be selected as the home for that facility. So the last theme, before moving out of the themes, is this project would be a huge benefit for the Parks Department's fieldhouse project, and the significant community benefits that I think all of us know it's going to offer. But again, we'll touch that at the end of the presentation. Those are the themes. On to number two, the project itself. This sets your bearings, as you look at the arrow on the screen, you have 150 here at the bottom of the screen, running east-west, you have 291, just for, because it jumps out, you have all the green here, which is the Shamrock Hills Golf Course, and we're just south of that, where the arrow is pointing. This slide is, you know, David was joking a little bit, but in all seriousness, I feel like Prince, formerly known as, right, whatever you're supposed to call it. This has been the Shamrock Project for almost 18 months. And as I mentioned in my last conceptual presentation to the council, that it is quite possible that the burglars that own the golf course, that we're working very closely with for well over a year, may unbolt, if you know what I mean, from a timing perspective, and come in later and really augment, right, what we're doing. And that's what happened. So the new boundaries, you can see the former boundaries here on the left in blue, kind of take that in, the golf course here being right here, this S shape. And then you can see to the right, what we did is, we ended up expanding farther east, and so that we have the new overall project, and to avoid confusion about Shamrock Golf Course not being part of it, we renamed it Lee Summit Crossing. This now, what you look at in red, which is the subject master property, master project property proposed, is approximately 180 acres of land. Going to the actual conceptual site plan, which you can see maps directly over that 180 acres, we've divided the project, because it's so large, into eight project areas or phases. The commercial phases, if you look at 291 here, the commercial phases are in the front, which makes sense, up along the highway, and then the residential phases are here in the back, so the back row. And then over to your east, that's just for, that's not part of our project in white, but for reference, that's Kobe Crossing. Then we go down to the conceptual imagery. So I want to, again, I'll do this quickly, because I know you'll stop and you'll ask me questions at the end about this, but for each of those phases, I want to quickly give you a deeper dive into exactly what, when we have our spreadsheet and our pro forma, and we have Jeff preparing to go out and look for users for these different sites, I want to walk through and give you a sense conceptually of each of those spaces, so that you can easily engage and ask questions later about any one of those. So let's start with what we call Project Area One, or Phase One. This is a mix of new urbanist senior villas with porches, and a community-focused design, as you can see from the conceptual imagery. And the second product, that's one product that's part of this, the second product that's part of this is much-needed townhomes, which, as I've talked to some of you individually, and we all acknowledge, there's very, very little inventory of new or newer sort of townhome living in the city. So again, you have your urbanist senior villas with alleys and porches, and then you have this townhome product. I'm going to point out, too, I won't do it every time, because you'll look on your own, the imagery is always tied to a circle that shows you where on the master development we are, so you can get a sense of where the phase is, and where this product would go. So we sometimes refer, have referred in the past to this part of the master project as TriStar, in short, which is our development partner that I introduced at the beginning. They are ready to proceed with construction this year on this, which is why we gave them the number-one phase at the top, subject to approval of the public-private partnership, ultimately, formally, that comes out of this conceptual. The second area, Project Area Two, is down in the southwest corner of the site, the hard corner of 291 and 150. This is the, this activates the following land for redevelopment. There's MoDOT Right-Away, I made quick reference to earlier, that we are in talks to acquire. And then it takes that overall eight-acre area, and first puts in about $3 million, this is my point about Swiss cheese, and why you have to have a presentation like this to this body and get support, about $3 million in infrastructure, just to make happen what you see as this number two. Well, what is this Phase Two? It's slated for a likely mix of restaurants, retail, and potentially, mixed in there, some small office or service-type businesses. Jeff Berg, who I introduced behind me earlier, has already started working on top restaurants and retailers for this part of the development, but we will not be able to secure, I mean, he could give a whole five-minute talk on this, why he cannot get LOIs for these type of top users, until we can show them that we're credible, that we have support for the infrastructure incentives to actually pull this off. But he's chomping at the bit, waiting for the outcome and feedback from tonight's meeting for Project Area Two. Project Area Three is the next. We travel up, as you can see, to the north, right here. This is the up-to-13-acre site for the Parks' exciting fieldhouse and likely fitness project. We've been coordinating with Parks through Joe Snook for really over a year, frankly, probably 15 months. We presented a written letter of intent to the Parks Department that, in short, would do the following. We would contribute up to approximately 13 acres, which is what you see on the screen there, labeled as three, running along, these are power lines, running along there, kind of frames the site with the arterial road. 13 acres at no charge to Parks. We would deliver the new public street and utility network, which would include the east-west road right here, that's a public street, that would provide access to the fieldhouse getting over to 291. We would also build two lanes of the arterial, all the way down north-south to 150, and as well as bring utilities to the property line. That overall cost, again, is just over $2 million, is what construction, our construction folks are estimating right now. And then finally, we would dedicate over $1 million of our first commercial incentives from our first phase, that we'd get started with immediately down here. We'd dedicate over $1 million of that to the fieldhouse for their site development costs, which I think they've talked about, if this moves forward, that it would be their parking and sort of hardscape area. So we are thrilled at the prospect of the fieldhouse locating at Lee Summit Crossing. There are some great synergies with our entertainment phase, especially, we call it Mammoth, which I'm going to talk about in just a second, that would be next to it. It will help drive captured customers that they have to retail and restaurants, and it would be helpful when we're drawing those users to our site. The synergies between the new residential rooftops that we put in, which is all to the east, that second row of development that I'll talk about in a minute, would be huge, whether it's the senior folks, or whether it's everybody else that's not a senior, being, having access to that fitness facility, and to the overall fieldhouse would be incredible. The really easy accessibility from the entire, I call it, the bottom third of the city, as in southern third of the city, when you think about it, would be amazing, including Property Reserve Inc.'s, PRI's, whole swath of land that we recently talked about. All would be really, really accessible to this site and that proximity, and we would hope would draw future residents to all of that ground to be developed, where rooftops would be attracted to be close to that facility. These synergistic mixed-use development components are really how, in our opinion, you create thriving, attractive destinations within the city. And in this case, I really mean that southernmost commercial node, when you look at Google Maps, or you do it in your head, as you know, and you look at 150 all across the southern part of the city, and you see how connected this would be, and really an amazing amenity if located here. So another point worth raising, and how suited this site is for the fieldhouse, this fieldhouse obviously is not a big-box retailer, right? It's not Best Buy, it's not Kohl's. It does not need to be right up on the major, you know, Main and Main, on the freeway, or on a major intersection, to capture people when they go, "Oh, my gosh, that's right there, I'm going to go buy a phone," or whatever. Quite the contrary, whether for tournaments, right, out-of-town people, in-town people, whether for games, league play, or just staying fit, right, in the fitness facility, it's always a destination. It doesn't have to be up at Main and Main. So we don't use precious highway frontage for the fieldhouse, as you can see here in the drawing, the site plan. Instead, we preserve all that for retail, we preserve it for restaurants, hotels, all of that, that really has to have, has to have that frontage. So finally, the timing of this project, it lines up perfectly, perfectly with what we understand Parks needs to be, which should be under construction late spring, early summer, I'm just repeating what I've heard Mr. Snook say publicly. And TriStar, which I said, if we get this public-private partnership coming out of this meeting on track and approved, TriStar will have its infrastructure in, if not late this year, early next year, which is exactly what provides the utilities and the early access, as you can look on the screen, all of this going right past the site, before Parks is even ready to start. So really, really good synergies and timing with the overall project. Okay, enough on Project Three. Project Area Four, this is just next to Three, right here, this is what we call the entertainment or the Mammoth Phase. And the reason we call it the Mammoth Phase, and you've seen sort of that mammoth character on this, some of these slides, is that we've signed an LOI with a top-notch developer of a, I call it, top-golf-like, but on steroids, product, that Mammoth is rolling out right now at a number of different sites. We have an LOI for them to do that right here, on this ground, in the location you see on the screen. And just very briefly, before I continue, I wanted to hear, you to hear, it's an important enough part of this project, I want you to hear directly from Rob Heineman on that in brief, and then I'll stand back up, and we'll finish going through the project areas.
Thanks, Kurt, and thanks for your time tonight, appreciate it. You guys have been very patient with us, we've obviously been in front of you a couple times now. And maybe just to take one step back, I mean, this is the sort of project that we love. We love projects that are tough, that are experiential destinations that draw, not just from kind of the local community, but the metro-wide, regional, whatever that might be, and we've got a lot of experience doing that. And, you know, my mentor on a lot of this stuff is Cliff Illeg, one of the Cerner founders, and what we've always tried to do, and we look at developments, is kind of follow the Disney principles, which is, start with a theme, do end-to-end design, sweat the details, push people out front, and try to sprinkle in a few magic moments. So a project like this for us, very, you know, clearly is themed active lifestyle, amateur athletics, you know, driving community benefit, and we're excited about it. I mean, when I talk to Jeff Berg about it, he feels like it's one of the really great untapped retail corridors in the entire metro area. And we feel that that allows us the opportunity to utilize a bunch of that retail girth to kind of, you know, develop the incentives to do all the public infrastructure that needs to be done. To talk about Mammoth Fieldhouse, it's a great concept. It's a concept created by the Ferent family, Jake Ferent, out of Meriting, Kansas. It's kind of a collaboration, or combination, I should say, of Topgolf, Chicken and Pickle, and Tiger Woods Putt-Put. They've brought in a great operating team of kind of former Topgolf executives that work on this. They've got a very well-capitalized group, including the Ferent family, and a lot of local Kansas City investors, or at least Kansas City region investors, and they've got a number of these that they're looking at. We're looking at a number of these locations with them, one in Corpus Christi, Texas, one in Arizona, another one in Chicago. So it's something that we're confident with, we know these guys. The fact that I think we were able to get an LOI done is really important, and we just think it's something that's going to make this destination really special, because that's what we want to do. We don't want this just to be a kind of drive-by place, this is a place that we want, you know, tens of thousands of people to come to, that creates, you know, a bunch of rubnights, and creates a really great experience that the city can be proud of. So that's what I think we can do here. It's taken us kind of a long time to get here, obviously, the market's been crazy around stuff like this while we've been working through this, but we feel very confident about this. We love this project, and, you know, we really hope that we're able to kind of deliver a park facility that I think will be really special. We have a lot of experience around those kind of facilities. You know, I'm the founder of Home Field, we just completed a facility out in Wyandotte County, that's quite similar to what I That's quite similar to what I think Joe would like to do here. It's 160,000-square-foot hardcore and turf facility. So we kind of know where a lot of the, I don't know, bumps in the road can be. I think we also can help a lot in design and probably pricing efficiencies around it. So I just think we've got a little special expertise around how to deliver a real high-end amateur athletics experience, and we're excited to do that here. But yeah, this is one that, you know, we put a lot of effort into and we hope we're able to see it to fruition. Thanks.
Thanks, Rob. So keep in our mind on the entertainment sort of mammoth area. We're back on the map. So the other pieces, first of all, again, I mentioned the mammoth symbol before. I'm just not want anybody saying afterwards, "What were the mammoth symbols?" We really expect that in addition to hopefully the fieldhouse, mammoth is what Lee Summit Crossing is going to be known for, right? People are really, it's going to, who knows? Maybe mammoth will find its way into the name even, but that's where the mammoth comes from. So this Area Four that you're looking at on the screen also is expected to have a limited-service hotel. We think there's real synergies with the fieldhouse when it comes to tournaments especially. We've already had some discussions with some hoteliers. And then lastly, we have an LOI from a medical office user that would include urgent care and physical therapy, some other practices, really nice one, that, again, they see synergies frankly with everything we're doing here, including the fieldhouse, as you can imagine why. So that's a taste of Project Area Four. I'm going to skip to Six. I'm doing that intentionally. This is the last of the commercial phases that you can see here. One more slide, right here. You're up again on the highway frontage in between mammoth and in between that first phase of commercial that we talked about. So it's slated for one or two very key flagship larger-type users, possible inline multi-tenant space as well as freestanding restaurant, retail, service, et cetera. We have had some preliminary talks with even one very, very prominent user that would like to be here, but they're making a decision in, I believe, Jeff can correct me, but at late '25, early '26, which is okay because remember, this is almost 200 acres. This takes time to phase out. But we're excited at that prospect. Also, just noting the infrastructure challenges, just to give you a sense. So this last phase of commercial, what's labeled as Six on the screen, puts in the rest of that north-south arterial that's so important, which is a total of four lanes, right? Two will be put in initially. The other, the last two are triggered by this development here. And then some other improvements down at 150 and even to the south that we'd be committed to doing. That total about $8.5 million for that infrastructure. So just hitting that theme that I started with, you know, no Swiss cheese. We have to do something, go big or go home. We can't get it done. But we're very enthusiastic with this approach. So I'm going backwards now to Phase, what really is Phase Five, Seven, and Eight. See how it's the back row here, Five, Seven, and Eight? This is all residential. And this is really the transition from Kobe Creek, as I said, which is in white right there, that under-development, single-family neighborhood. This is anticipated to include, this entire Five, Seven, and Eight area is anticipated to include one multifamily project, approximately 300 units, as well as other types of mixed residential demanded by the market. And they're like, "What is mixed residential?" Well, it means everything else that we need to do in the market that's not multifamily. That can be various types of senior living products. There's some real demand and interest in that. It could be straight, single-family like Kobe Creek. It could be villas, row houses, townhomes. It could be for sale. It could be for rent. And frankly, I think it's going to be a mix of both. But the market will tell us, and we're going to, we're going to build and make happen what the market demands. So that balances out the rest of that back row of residential. And so back to one theme I think I mentioned earlier, which is we all know there's not enough housing. This is not a Lee Summit problem. This is not a Kansas City problem. This is something I face with real estate developers across the country. We need more housing of all types and kinds, and we really think this would make a nice splash in the southern corridor with that, with a real balanced approach. So next, we go to dollars. Let's take a look at the financial side. What it would take to make this a reality. You can see the yellow highlighted bottom line at the bottom of the screen. This is an estimated budget for everything of over $400 million. I think that's probably light, honestly, conservative. The public incentives to make this hap, or sorry, the overall dollars that would go into this would be a mix of private debt and equity, just normal what you see with projects. If the City Parks facility goes here, there'd be City Park sales tax revenue, funds that they've saved up. And then lastly, the public incentives. And it's that third piece I want to unpack for you so you know what you're considering. So the proposed public incentives to easily digest it, and again, many of you, you've seen a version of this before. You have to divide it into the commercial that we talk about, that entire front row. And then second, we'll go to the residential. So on the commercial side, the public incentives being requested include tax increment financing, which is made up of two things. It's made up of the incremental real property taxes, meaning what? The taxes are, you know, near zero on this massive piece of property right now. But when you start building expensive things, there'll be big tax bills. And so that incremental real property tax gets redirected back to help with costs for the project. That's the first part of TIF. The second part is, there's no sales out there right now other than Sonic. There's no sales at all. So it would say half of the sales tax from the county, city, and zoo, the local sales tax, half of that would be redirected to help pay for infrastructure, et cetera. The other half would go to the taxing jurisdictions, the city, the county, and the zoo. So there is an immediate impact financially on the positive side for the city. That's TIF, and I'm doing it fast because I know a lot of you know this well, and you'll come back to it, and you'll ask David and me if you have questions. The second part of making the commercial, on the commercial, would be an add-on sales tax. So every time a burger is sold or a room night is sold, there'd be a 1% additional sales tax through a transportation development district, a TDD 1% sales tax. It's only within the district, only with sales there. Second of all, there'd be a CID, a Community Improvement District, 1% add-on sales tax. So in total, if you bought a burger for, you know, a dollar, I guess I'm going back to, what is that, the '80s? You buy it for a dollar, then you are going to pay an additional 2 cents for that burger. Then lastly, and this is the fourth and final component to the commercial incentives proposed, is sales tax exemption on construction materials. But this would only be on the significant parts of the commercial. This would not be on a run-of-the-mill pad side or a restaurant or something. There'd be a threshold proposed to make sure it's only targeting those significant users. And so we threw out there, and this is obviously negotiable, we thought significant capital investment of $4 million. So remember in Phase Six when we talked about, we're talking to a very significant retailer? Oh, yeah. That's going to be way more than $4 million. We'd like to induce them and say, "This is where you want to be. We can provide sales tax exemption." So that in a nutshell, very quickly, is the commercial side of this overall proposed package. On the residential side, it's much more narrow and targeted. So on the residential side, we have, and you know what? I'm going to pause. Before we do that, quickly tell you where the money goes. Back on commercial, we just talked about money flowing, right? Money flowing to help do things. Well, it's doing two things. One is helping with the public infrastructure. That's the primary. I started my whole presentation that way. It's the major theme of this whole evening's discussion. That's over, it's over $20 million of infrastructure. With the balance helping induce those key users I talked about before, that's Mammoth. That's the potential hotel. That's that medical office building that would go there with the jobs associated with that. And then finally, the fieldhouse. So that's how we'd use those commercial dollars that are generated through incentives. Now, to the residential. The residential would have two pieces. It would say, first of all, TriStar, that first starter that would happen immediately this year, that construction project up in the north side of the project. It would have a proposed pilot, and this is the same pilot you heard about months and months and months ago. That's very high. There's never been one this high in any deal you've ever approved. $2,776 per unit. The reason is, it's really meant to guard against Jackson County. And when David unpacks this presentation, you'll see that that proves to be true. But it's absolutely essential to be able to finance the project, which is why it sat there for now, what, almost two years, with fully entitled and can't go anywhere. And also, sales tax exemption would go along with that to help with their infrastructure costs. The second piece is, and this is really important part of how we've listened to council, there would be Chapter 100 proposed for a typical multifamily luxury project, but only one, up to approximately 300 units. And that would have what we've used in the last, what is it now, two years? An $1,800 pilot, but with an inflator that would make sure it keeps up with inflation. And again, that would only be for one phase, and that too would have sales tax exemption on construction materials. So those are the narrow two uses of incentives related to residential. Everything else is the commercial incentives. And that's your speed round through the overall incentives that are proposed. We're not going to go through every line of this, but just to show all the work that's gone into this, there's been tons and tons of work, both with staff and with our engineer and traffic engineer and construction folks. But what this, what you're looking at on the screen in front of you is how you take a, almost 200 acres of property, almost more than $22 million of public infrastructure to act, to be even able to develop it. And you go in and you figure out, how do you take public incentives across three different commercial areas? We've talked about all three. Over time, and match it up in sequence and do it in a conservative way, showing bond proceeds that actually make it all happen. So again, it's not, it's more than a prop, but it's meant to show you there's a ton of time and energy and thought and expertise that's gone into making sure what we're proposing, we can actually do. And again, we can circle back to this later if people have questions on it. So these next two I'll go through quickly, again, as something we can reference later in questions. But we broke out the public costs of the project, which includes the fieldhouse anticipating that we'd be able to have them make this their home. And that's that bottom-line number of $53 million. And it goes across each type of incentive that I talked about, TIF, CID, and TDD, and talks about how we would allocate those incentives to those different parts of public costs. We then took the balance of the project and divided it into the private types of private costs, and also took the incentives and layered those in to those different categories. And again, we can go back and talk about that. So the way I wanted to end with that last, I said there was three pieces of the presentation. This is the last piece, which is, we've been through a lot. This council, most members of the council have been through a lot. A lot of conversations, a lot of analysis. And since the last conceptual we had in the last part of the previous year, these were the major items that we heard. And I want to tell you how we've addressed them and then conclude and be available for your questions after David speaks. The first is that there's no sharing of city sales tax. You may remember that there was a proposal to help pay for the public infrastructure that the city would share approximately half of the city's sales tax that wasn't captured by TIF. And we heard loud and clear that that was not something that the council was interested at this time. And so we replaced it with that TDD 1% sales tax that you heard me present already. So I just want you to know that was an absolute pivot. We were happy to make that pivot. And there's no, there's no extra city sales tax sharing above and beyond the TIF in this case. The second item was providing more detail on the conceptual plan for the commercial. So hopefully, even though I went intentionally fast so we're not here till 1:00 in the morning, we hopefully provided you with quite a bit of an insight into what would go in each one of those commercial phases conceptually, and then even with our LOI with Mammoth and the medical office building. The next was, we were asked to minimize by a couple particular council people that articulated themselves well, said, "I'd really like to see you minimize the multifamily, you know, apartments portion of the project." So we originally had planned three phases of multifamily. You might remember that. And we continue to believe and know that multifamily is critical. It's critical to this city and every city as part of its healthy and vibrant growth in terms of residential product. And in a mixed-use development that is this expansive, we think that one phase, you know, approximately 300 residential units is absolutely necessary as a kind of baseline, healthy part of its ecosystem. So that's what we've gone with. Now, the number-one requirement of commercial users, as you've heard people say a million times because it happens to be absolutely true, is you got to have rooftops or Jeff Berg can't do his job, right? He's not going to get the best users. You've got to have rooftops. So even having one phase of multifamily is a healthy way to indicate that to the market. So again, to be abundantly clear on this important point, listening to y'all, there will not be a request for more than one phase of Chapter 100 multifamily apartments on this very large project, period. We've made one other commitment that's related. The other commitment is that we will not even make that request for the approximately 300 units of multifamily for Chapter 100 until we have started construction on that commercial Area Three, which is going to be fast, down on the hard corner. That is, we are not asking that on the residential side until we start delivering to you what we've said on the commercial side. That's another commitment we would ask if we just move forward to put in a development agreement to make sure that that is contractually binding. So second-to-last item here that we heard was from a number of people. They said, "You're not doing a good job." No, it wasn't that bad. "You need to do a better job of quantifying the economic impact for the city." This is not, this is 200 acres of ground that's doing nothing and won't do anything unless you get the infrastructure in. Tell the city this, say it publicly. You know, the benefits to the city. So briefly, I'm going to do that. And if the mayor was here, he would have been very aggressive and berated me over that. I'm confident, for those of you that see that happen before. So the project puts nearly 200 acres in play, like I said, that are not in play for development right now. And there was a Main Street study that I know personally, I've cited to this council several different times over the years, that talks about how much spending there is in nice luxury apartments in the perimeter, you know, in the area around it per year. And the number that's generally accepted as a good estimate is about $12,000 a year per person. So assuming the senior product in the top, TriStar, right? And then also the townhomes and one phase of multifamily. And then I just did a very loose conservative, it's probably much higher, of single-family and some townhomes for the rest of this residential development. So you assume 720 people, and you assume that $12,000 in spending per person. And what you end up with is nearly $10 million per year in spending. I mean, you kind of do the numbers, you're like, geez, it really is a big deal. And now you realize why Jeff can't do his job until we have rooftops. People spend money and they do it close by. So construction and resident spending also equal jobs. We estimate approximately, we did it on a spreadsheet through all the, how this would build out. We think the commercial and the multifamily together would create approximately 250 jobs here. Again, we're trying to be light for credibility. It's probably more. And then when you look at KCADC data that we've used, again, before this body before, that talks about the effect of new jobs, it says that would probably create another 60 jobs from a ripple effect. And there'd be economic output of approximately a total of $29 million using that KCADC formula. So I think I probably, hopefully, I did the mayor proud there in really trying to make a point, but do it quickly and not spend 10 minutes on it. There's major economic impact from a tax revenue perspective and from every ripple effect job and economic well-being for the city if we can make this project a reality. So lastly, this project, I said I'd end with this. We'll make the project, the fieldhouse project that's proposed by the Parks Department better. It will be a better community asset because of what we proposed. Now, ultimately, that's not our decision, right? We're giving your opinion, but we think it's an educated one that's well-substantiated. We didn't really emphasize this very important fact in the last conceptual meeting, which many of you were quick to point out. Again, a lot of this is like not going hours in affirmative presentation, but this, we didn't talk about this. So by providing the land that you heard me say tonight to Parks Department, by providing the infrastructure to the tune of several million dollars, another million dollars for parking lots, sort of hardscape, the Parks Department funding for the project, the funding they have set aside that they're going to spend, will be able to go farther. It'll make it whatever, whatever Joe and his board decide in this council. It'll make it bigger, it'll make it better, or both. The large amount of land also provides another key benefit. You know, up to 13 acres. We're kind of saying, "Hey, how much of this do you want? Do you want all of it?" It provides flexibility should the design for the fieldhouse lead to a larger design. I kind of hope and think, and nobody's asking me, but I kind of think it might grow a little bit based on what Rob said, our experience with similar fieldhouses. And not only that, maybe the Parks Department will decide to put in a turf, a sheet of turf out there, right, next to the fieldhouse. That's up to them. But this provides the amount of land that they could do that. They have flexibility. This fieldhouse is a once-in-a-generation city project. I don't need to tell you that, but I'm saying it out loud. We are hopeful that we can be a part of maximizing its size, its quality, and its flexibility with the land it needs. So in conclusion, a successful, excellent development in this, you know, 180, 200 acres of land will not happen, again, without a, an overall well-thought-out, of land will not happen, again, without an overall, well-thought-out, sequenced incentives package like this. This incentives package, now that there's no, quote, "shared city sales tax," is not unusual or outside what the city has done with other major projects. It's a well-thought-out, reasonable proposal with a big upside for the city financially and otherwise, and it doesn't put a single council member in a position of trying to approve something in a way that they've never done before, blazing new trails. It's not. And while this is just a conceptual meeting, David's always really good. It has to be known, this is a conceptual meeting, nothing's binding. David said it right. But the feedback is unbelievably important. Sometimes it's ugly, sometimes it's good, but it's helpful because we go from here, this is our third conceptual, we've said, this is it, right? This is as good as we can do, and this is our no-go, our go-no-go night. And after, we've been working on it for two years, and this third conceptual presentation, we're going to go and spend, you know, it's immediately in the coming months, hundreds of thousands of dollars to start to implement, or not, to bring these incentives approvals forward. So, one council member said, "You need to end by saying, what exactly comes next? If there's generally positive support for what you're talking about, Kurt, tonight, what should they expect?" So that's the very last thing. What would you expect? If there's overall feedback that's positive, you will first see immediately TriStar Chapter 100 for that residential, the senior and the townhomes to the north, will come forward so that they can get their Chapter 100 approved, so that they can move forward with putting in the infrastructure yet this year, so that Parks is ready to go in Q1 with all their infrastructure put in. Then you will see, this year, this summer, you'll see TIF, CID, and TDD, and we'll bring that together all as a package, it just takes longer. TIF just takes longer. So there's a process. We'll do all that at one time so you can see that move together. And then feathered in there, as all that's moving, we'll start bringing individual zonings in, right? And development plans for everything we've been talking about, from Mammoth to, you know, whether it's Aldi on the hard corner there and everything else, we'll start to do those individually. And frankly, everything I just said, other than incentives, would be approved. All that would continue for all these phases, right? I'll probably get to see you guys for years and years on this site as we build it out. So with that, I know that was long. I hope you know it was measured because we've worked a long time on it and we know this is it. So thank you for your patience, and thank you for your feedback over a lot of months and help me to make it a better project. And thank you for your time.
Should I wait, or should I?
No, I had to step out with an emergency phone call, so, yeah, go ahead with the pieces.
All right. I'll go over to my slides. And I will start with a brief bit of history. I know that the developer's presentation was very thorough, covered quite a bit of what I'm going to say, so I won't go over the project, but I'm really going to focus on, briefly, on the history and then an understanding of what the incentives are that they're requesting. TriStar received its rezoning approval in June of 2022. And then in December of '22 was the first conceptual presentation by the precursor of the primary developer entity that's before you tonight, 635 Holdings. I don't believe that entity was formally formed at that point in time, but that was the first conceptual presentation for the project. And then in May of '23, last year, TriStar's conceptual presentation was given to the City Council. And then in December of last year, both of those projects joined together and made what is effectively their joint second presentation to you. So tonight is effectively the third conceptual presentation for the project as a whole and the third for each individual project, although they both had different starting points. So that's a bit of the background. So, like I said, most of my comments then will be focusing on helping you understand what the incentives are. And so this chart tells most of that story. And because, like I said, we have a couple new council members, I will provide a little more background about some of this than you're used to, to make sure everybody's following along for this and the next presentation also. So this first chart, you've seen variations of this in the past. What this chart shows, the first column is the phases, so this is an indication of which portion of the project that you just saw of those different areas we're talking about. The source, this is the specific incentive, statutory incentive mechanism that is being proposed. This is the sort of plain English description of the incentive tool, and then also its purpose down here, sort of the plain English statement of what the purpose of the tool is. For each of these incentives, there's typically an applicable rate. That can vary depending on what the tool is, and I'll explain what that means, but this column shows the rate for the incentive, shows the duration of the incentive, the purpose, like I said, the sort of plain English explanation of what the incentive does. This column is a statement of the financial benefit to the developer. And then this is the percentage of project costs. And so this is a basic math equation. It's taking the estimated financial benefit of each incentive, and it's divided into the total project cost at the bottom. So this percentage is a percentage of the total project cost, and this is a basic metric that we use many times in the past to evaluate projects on an apples-to-apples basis when they're requesting incentives. So now, to walk through each of these incentives, the first incentive is Chapter 100, and as was just explained, it will be on portions of the commercial, actually only portions of the multifamily, so I think this is probably a typo on my part. Phases seven and eight are not included in the Chapter 100 request. Sales tax exemption on construction materials at 100% means that all of the materials purchased for the projects that qualify under this Chapter 100 incentive will not pay sales and use tax on the construction materials that are purchased for the project. So, everything that goes into building the building is purchased on a tax-exempt basis for those components of the project. The estimated financial benefit to developers, $5.5 million, which is 1.4% of the total project cost. Also, through the Chapter 100 incentive, they're effectively requesting fixed pilot, as Mr. Peterson just described to you, which is effectively, by my calculation, property tax abatement for Phase 1, which is the TriStar, it's about 15% by my calculation, and for their Phase 5 apartments, it's about 38% tax abatement based on the fixed pilot that they're requesting. That would last for 10 years in each case, $3.4 million financial benefit, which is a little less than 1% of the total project cost. The TIF plan, then, TIF has two components, pilots and ETS. Pilots is the capture of the property tax increment, so this TIF would capture 100% of the increased property taxes from the property, could last for up to 23 years. Developers' calculation is that is about a $16.5 million benefit, which is 4% of the project cost. And then the ETS component, ETS means economic activity taxes, which are basically the sales taxes generated by the project. TIF captures half of those sales tax dollars, and that would be the cities, the counties, the zoo district, the CID, and the TDD. 50% of all those sales tax dollars would be captured for up to 23 years, estimated financial benefit calculated by the developer at $18.1 million, which is 4.4% of the total project cost. Then finally, the two special-purpose districts, the Community Improvement District, which would impose a new 1% sales tax, their calculating, their modeling shows 22 years. Financial benefit to the project is $4.3 million. That's to reimburse for public improvements, which is a little over 1% of the project budget. And then the Transportation Development District, the metrics there are the same because it's a 1% sales tax, so it's an identical projected financial benefit. So in the end, the projected financial benefit is about $52 million for the project, which is about 12.8% of the total project cost. And that is a summary of all of the incentives that are being requested. This is my recap of the developer's budget, just to simplify the budget down for you to look at. This is, like I said, this is basically a recap of the developer's more elaborate budget that they showed you. One thing that you might notice, and this is, there's two things that I need to point out here in relation to the previous slide. Developers' calculation of the incentives is only a calculation of the new revenue streams that would flow to the project. So if you go back to the previous chart, there are certain items that reduce the developers' cost through the Chapter 100. That is not calculated into the flow of revenues that reimburse the developer for public improvements. Those incentive components only reduce the project cost. So if you're looking through this with a fine-tooth comb, you might notice that this number does not match the total incentive benefit from the previous slide, but that's because I'm calculating in all of the cost reductions as well as the new revenues that would reimburse the developer for public improvements as they've been discussing. And so this shows the outlay of the portion of the total project cost that's incentives, would be funded by the Parks Department or through the incentives for the benefit of the Parks Department for the parking, and then the private dollars that would be put into the project. So that's a snapshot of the entire budget. There's one other aspect of the developer's request that I, it's hard to articulate on a slide, so I don't have a slide to show you, but I'll explain it. This, my calculation of the benefit of each of these incentives is the, with the exception of the sales tax exemption, which is immediate benefit during the construction period, this is effectively the net present value of a future revenue stream. So the developers calculated what the TIF and the CID and the TDD would generate over a period of years. Their calculation results in raw dollars every year, and then we do, and we do this virtually every time you see one of these requests, we do a net present value calculation, what's the value of that future revenue stream in today's dollars? That's my calculation here. There's one additional component that the developer included in their request, which is this. They factored in an issuance of bonds by the city. So whereas I have calculated for you what the financial benefit to the project is, they have taken an additional calculation, which incorporates, and this is where it gets a little complicated, and hopefully my explanation makes sense, they factored into a, factored in a coverage ratio when, if the city were to issue debt, which is essentially their request. So the comparison I would have is, if you're going to try to get a home loan, for example, you need to demonstrate to the bank that you have sufficient income to make your payments on that home loan before the bank will give you that loan. And so typically, you have to demonstrate whatever those bank, whatever the bank requirements are, but you have to demonstrate you're receiving, you have sufficient income in your household to obtain this loan so the bank is certain that you can make the payments. That's typical bank lending policies. In the case of the city issuing debt, there's a coverage ratio, which means for every dollar of debt service that might be advanced to repay that debt, you typically have to demonstrate that there's $1.30 of revenue to service that debt. So the developer has factored into their request, which is basically baked into this number here, a debt issuance by the city, and so their calculation of the total benefit of the incentives after a debt issuance is lower than my calculation here, which is the net present value, assuming the city had not issued debt. I know that's a little complicated, but I wanted to point that out because that's a distinction between my calculation of the benefit of the incentives and the developer's calculation of how this incentive package might proceed. This table you have seen in the past, and this is updated, this is all of the incentives that have been approved by the City Council historically, dating back to the year 2000. This is all of the projects where incentives have been provided regardless of the tool, and you'll see our complex matrix of all of the, I won't go through all of these, but a listing of all the projects, tabulation of the various land uses by project, the reimbursement type and the percentage by type of tool, TIF, LCRA, CID, TDD, and so forth. And then I've included the projects down here at the bottom. And the key takeaway for this is probably the summary at the bottom, this is probably what's most useful to you. For the last 24 years, we've had 35 projects. The highest reimbursement percentage total, 34%, the lowest is about 1.7%. So if you were to remove those outliers, the range of incentives that the City Council has approved historically is between 2% and 30%. That's roughly the range that we're looking at. And then I've broken it down by type of incentive, TIF, LCRA, CID, and TDD from our historic numbers. Project average, if you were to take all of these projects for the last 24 years and average them out, it's about 18% per project, accounting for the very lowest and the very highest, and the size of the projects and so forth. So you can use that as a scale to compare to the incentive requests that you're seeing tonight, you're considering in this presentation, and also the next one. We'll see the same chart with the exact same numbers. So this is a benchmark for you to evaluate both of these incentive requests, and that's my summary of this table. I will stop at that point. I do have more information, I can go into more depth about the residential incentives, and there's a lot of different directions the discussion could go, but I know this is a lot of information for the City Council to hear, and so I will stop at this point and will open up to discussion and questions and see where your questions lead us with more in-depth discussion.
Thank you, David. Councilmember Shields.
Thank you. I had a question about the incentive calculation, that percentage. Does that take into account the funds that would be going back to the Parks Department? Because some of those incentives are going sort of directly back to the city, not just through the infrastructure, like for the million dollars, whatever, for the parking lot?
It does. It does. So, the TIF reimbursement that effectively flows to the Parks Department is in these numbers. They haven't been, I don't, I'm going to say this, and I think this is accurate, I don't think they've been specific enough to say whether the reimbursement comes specifically from pilots or ETS, which is pretty common at this point. Typically, you see the developer's budget, as they showed in their slides, and you see the reimbursement by type, TIF, CID, TDD, and so forth. Probably doesn't get specific enough to specify whether it comes from pilots or ETS, but the answer to your question is that Parks benefit is included in the TIF numbers here.
Okay. So if you wanted to take that out, it doesn't seem like it'd be a huge chunk of that since the overall incentive is over 50 million, but it might knock that down just a little bit?
That's correct. So, that benefit, I think Kurt has something to say on this point, too.
I was going to say, this is so apropos, we'll lose it if I don't quickly say it. Councilmember Shields, I didn't highlight this, again, it's one more detail, Mr. Snook knows this, but early on, we agreed that if you think about TIF, and you think about what we call ETS, which is capturing half of the local sales tax, that would include, right, Parks has its dedicated sales tax. We've offered as part of this to give that back to them, so that no Park sales tax is captured, just a detail.
Okay. Thank you. You talked about the possibility of city bond issuance. What kind of bonds would those be? Would there be any potential liability to the city if the different incentives didn't produce, basically?
So, we haven't had detailed discussions about that. The genesis of that request from the developer in our discussions with them is that their presumption was that the Parks Department would have to issue debt at least in some amount to fund the fieldhouse. I don't know if that's accurate because, and that comment came, well, I'll just say last year, I don't remember when. But my understanding from the Parks Department is that they can fund the fieldhouse on a cash or nearly full cash basis. I'll let the Parks Department speak about that if you want to hear more. So we may not need to issue any debt, even for the fieldhouse component, but we'll deal with that issue when the time comes. So to answer your question, if the City Council were to consider issuing debt for a portion of the incentives, it would probably be special obligation bonds, which is the type of bond that we, that the council has authorized issuing for the Downtown Market Plaza project, which you've heard about recently, would probably be special obligation bonds as opposed to some sort of general obligation bond.
So, if there wasn't enough CID, TDD revenue, like, I just want to make sure I'm understanding, like, they're asking for a bond to fund this upfront, and then it would get paid back with those revenues, or no?
Correct.
Okay, and if there weren't enough revenues, what happens?
The bondholders would not be fully repaid.
Does the city be expected to pay anything out of the general fund?
Well, that's a very good question. I think if we were to go down this path and we were to issue debt, the issuing documents would effectively say that this is not general obligation debt by the city. However, it would still be city debt. And if there was ever a situation where those bonds were in default, it would probably have a negative impact on the city just by the fact that the city's name is associated with that issuance. I'm jumping way ahead to a sort of disaster scenario. Presumably, if we ever reach the point where we're issuing this type of debt for this type of project, we would go through all of the analysis so we never reach that point and we don't issue debt that can't be repaid. But you're basically asking me for the worst-case scenario, and in a situation where the bonds actually go into default, yes, it could be a negative to the city's credit rating. Again, worst-case scenario.
And I understand that, and we hope that we never end up in a situation like that. But I think one of the reasons that something like a TIF or a CID can be palatable is that we know that it only pays off if the development is successful, right? So if it's not successful, at the end of the day, the developer's on the hook, not the city. And it's sort of a reward for having a successful, well-functioning development, is that it produces those revenues to pay back those costs. I feel like the, if we went down the route of a bond issuance, that wouldn't necessarily be the same incentive structure.
I would agree with all that analysis, yes.
This is probably a question for the developer. I'm just sort of curious why the footprint of the project changed so much? What happened there was just a matter of land negotiation, or did kind of the structure of it change, or what happened there?
Councilmember Shields, as I'm going to the right slide to answer that question, just understand, Mr. Buseck was right, 18 months ago, when we made assumptions about, oh my gosh, a Parks project, and if there's bonding, it's very efficient to glom onto that. While I'd be happy also to address any questions you have about that, that is, that's a conversation for another day that's not essential, so I hope no one makes that an essential component of this project. It was something that was...
So for you guys, if we said we don't like the idea of bonds, that wouldn't impact your ability to do this project?
Right. Or my preferred, because that's what we at least ask, would be to say, hey, maybe don't count on it, I want to give you other feedback, don't count on that, and let's evaluate it when the time comes. But as long as you don't count on it, then if you get a no, then fine. But it kind of kicks the can, because it's just not the essential component of the project. So answering your question, the best slide to do it was that one that was this guy. So, if you follow the hand, please, that, it's kind of a darker green you can see, that is the Shamrock Golf Course. And so the owners of the Shamrock Golf Course, who are good friends with Mr. Heineman, that was really, to be honest, that was the impetus it all started with. Let's redevelop the golf course. And as, it really took over a year of working with them very closely, and things morphing, and they said, you know what? And I could, I could do a much longer answer, I'm going short. They were like, you know what? I call it unboltin'. We're going to step aside, says golf course. We know we'll do something at some point, but this timing isn't exactly right, whatever, so we think we're going to follow your lead. And when they did that, you'll remember, we had single-family in here, and we had some apartments in here, et cetera, et cetera. We needed a place to put our residential component, so we unbolted this piece, so take that hat off, and you move over here, and see how this wasn't in the project as you go up to Kobe Creek to the east? We got control of that. So now, we have no golf course, but we have that additional 60 acres of Kobe Creek, and that's where we put our residential, we moved it. So I don't want to speak for the Burgess family, be careful, but since I talk to them all the time, we will, this will happen. There will be something here, it's just going to follow suit, and so we unbolted it from what is now Lisa McCrossing. And so we unbolted it from what is now Lisa McCrossing. Yes, ma'am.
I don't know that I have any other really specific questions. Overall, I think that this is a good project. I think it's something that this area, the city, could really use. I think it seems pretty obvious that this area wouldn't be able to develop as it is with the infrastructure needs. Maybe that's a question to the city. We kind of agree with that analysis, that there's no way to make this all happen at this point with the amount of roads and everything else that's needed to make this a viable, like, it hasn't developed for a reason yet, is I guess what I'm getting at.
That's accurate. I'll call it the lift, the public improvements that are needed to serve this area, it's a heavy lift. And so to rely on just as small as Mr. Peterson mentioned, right, a restaurant here, and then incremental, it's just, yeah, it's tough to do.
Yeah, I liked the discussion about the public benefit in terms of jobs and spending. I like in the structure of the incentives, that there's still going to be a lot of revenue coming to the city from the pilots and the half of the sales tax that still flows to the city, so I think that's good. I know we're gonna hear another presentation yet this evening. I think we probably have a choice between two pretty good options, so I'm not saying that I won't have a lot of positive feedback for that one, too, but I like a lot of what I've seen for this one, so thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Rader.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Mr. Busek, I just, or somebody answered this question, and you may have said this, but I don't, there was a lot to, for our little ears to take. Have we had, have we ever had an incentive package this big?
Yes.
Okay. So this isn't the biggest one?
No, Discovery Park is probably the biggest incentive package. Discovery Park is probably, like I said, at the time, maybe the largest TIF project in the history of the state, or maybe number two. So Discovery Park is larger, by a factor of two, at least.
Okay. That's great. Thank you for that. And then I wanted to ask the applicant a question, too, so. I know you said that there were, was there three phases, three parts, hotel, medical office, and then the fieldhouse, the three components?
The fieldhouse would be a fourth, if you count like that. You have kind of one, two, three, and then fieldhouse would be four, everything that's in front here along the highway.
And I know this is a conceptual plan, and I know you don't have anything, I'm guessing you don't have anything in stone as far as like an LOI.
Just the mammoth, the big entertainment golf, top golf on steroids, and then the medical office building, those are the only two LOIs we have. Kind of all follows this process when we can ink those.
And so you're saying that if this project doesn't move forward, then, or I guess I should say, you can't know at this point if you have other people that will join in until you know for sure that you have the project.
Totally transparently, if Jeff Berg, sitting behind me, came up here, and this wasn't a public meeting, and you wanted to ask questions about who he's talked to and who he thinks is likely and all that, you would get an earful, but it's just not appropriate, and we don't have LOIs, because it's just not the way the market works. They won't do that at this stage. But once we show we have an infrastructure package and we're moving forward, then I think pretty quickly he's gonna start to get LOIs.
Yeah, and you know, the reason I'm asking that is because things can change. I mean, you can, we can say yes, and then everybody can say no, no, or yes, yes, or you know how that goes. So I bet I get it, I get it, but I just had to ask.
Yes, understood.
All right. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor Protem.
Thank you. Other questions from council? I see some others pop up. I just, a couple of comments and maybe some, maybe a couple of follow-up questions. First of all, thank you guys for, I know this is the third time coming before us, and Definitely shows that you've listened, so thank you guys for that, and you've heard us, and taken some of the detail feedback that we thought was important. It looks like you've implemented it. Overall, I think your presentation is much more succinct. The master plan is, I think, I can probably speak for most of us up here, is very important, very critical. I think it's already been said, it's a part of our community that could use, you know, this kind of economic impact, for sure, and these kind of services. So I know you've done your homework. I know you have some, Mr. Berg, obviously, he's very credible in the industry, so that helps your case a lot, from my perspective. And a couple of questions, though, as far as, you know, the debt service, maybe to Mr. Busek, and possible city guarantee of bonds.
Yeah, I don't think we'd ever do that. I would never recommend that to the city. The city's never done that. There was a request, I think, in the early days of the Summit Fair TIF, for the city to back some of the debt that was issued. The city said no, and I don't think we've ever really seriously been asked since that time, so I don't think that would ever be an option. And they're not asking for that tonight.
Okay. And I apologize, I had to step out for a non-life-threatening emergency, but, so I missed part of the presentation. That's why I'm asking this question. So just to confirm, anything that has to do with the fieldhouse, there is some bond issuance for that, some of those expenses?
So on that question, I'm not sure. I've heard that the Parks Department can fund this with cash or mostly cash, and I would like to have Mr. Snook answer that question, if you'd like more detail.
Joe Snook, Minister of Parks Department. At this point, based upon our future projections over the course of this project, by the time it opens, we believe we're gonna have the funds available to pay for it without financing. Things could change, depends on how the sales tax and use tax, but based upon performance so far, we're fairly confident we'll be able to do that.
Okay. So any kind of debt issuance would be solely for this, not for any public infrastructure improvements?
The answer to that is yes, unless you tell us otherwise. So as Mr. Peterson said, part of their early request was to essentially attach to the debt issuance that was presumed to be needed for the fieldhouse. You just heard that that is very unlikely. And I think the best way to evaluate that debt component of the discussion tonight is assume that the developer, I mean, they technically are requesting the city to issue debt, if we can do that, but assume that we will be proceeding on a pay-as-you-go basis, which means the calculations that I showed you on my sheet, the first sheet here, this is an accurate statement of how the revenues would flow to the developer and the benefits to the developer on a pay-as-you-go basis if debt was not issued. And I think that's part of the discussion that I provided that you missed.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Appreciate that. So, Mr. Peterson, quick question for you. Or maybe the developer, your client. Not to put you on the spot, but if, all right. If, I think it's the seat that makes you kind of ask tough questions.
I was saying, that tends to happen from right here.
Yeah. So if, you know, not that, I don't see this as two competing projects. I see this as an opportunity for us in this community. And so I said it, and I mean it sincerely, thank you guys for considering investing in this community. It wasn't that long ago, like, tonight, this is very unique and amazing, honestly, that we have two credible investor-developers to come into our community. You all have your separate concepts, but it is tied by, in this case, the fieldhouse. So that's what makes it awkward for us, for us. But that being said, could you all proceed without the fieldhouse component, with the part of, with majority of your development, of your phases?
Yeah, we agree, by the way. I mean, Drake's an incredible developer, had the chance to work with them a number of times, so there's, for us, it's not awkward for us, but I understand what you're saying. To answer your question, the answer is...
And I'm not seeing, I'm not taking a position on anything, making a decision on anything.
I'm trying to make it not awkward, like, it's not, no big deal. Two great developers, two great projects, right? So the answer is, there's certain components that'll be a lot harder without it. For example, take the hotel. We've been approached by the hoteliers, right? And they're excited about everything we're doing, and they're excited about the proximity to someplace that would have tournaments, right? So could I guarantee you that we'd be able to get, we won't do a bad hotel. If we're gonna do a hotel, I mean, you've seen the pictures I showed, right? This development team does excellent, they don't do not-excellent. So could that be in peril? Could be. Other things like that, the MOB, we could probably, a little hard to tell, because there's that whole connection between sports, right, and the physical therapy and all of that. But Mammoth, Mammoth would love to have them there, but doesn't need to have them there. Our restaurant and retail doesn't need to have it. I think the residential, there's, it's just so natural to have the residential around the fitness, and even some of the league play and things like that. I think that would really be promoted in that corridor by having it there. So I'm giving a long answer, because you see how it's a mixed bag, but there's nothing like, nuclear bomb, your project's dead, nothing like that. We just think it's, to be fair, right? We think it's the best for Parks and the best site, but you had that in our presentation. So no, it's not, it doesn't destroy our project.
Appreciate that.
Sure.
I knew it was a tough answer.
Yeah, no problem.
All right. That's all I have for now, I'll save my opinions for later, but Councilmember Pryor, I think, has, wants to make comments.
Thank you. So I really like the Mammoth. I'm not shy about saying that I am one of the council members that has been pretty vocal about, I'm just tired of seeing the same things over and over, and I'm ready to see new things brought to our city that's going to attract tourism, but that's also going to give young people here something to do, because we're really lacking that. So I really like the Mammoth. And I like your development. I know that, I agree with Mayor Protem, like, I don't think it's necessarily a competing development. I think that you guys are both gonna probably have really good, separate, different aspects to it. So, but I am going to reserve my full opinions until after I do hear the second presentation, but I do, I do like your project, so thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Just to clarify, though, it's conceptual, so I think in this case, they do need to leave here with some idea. We may not agree with everything, every component, but I think they want an idea if we're willing to proceed with them, if, with or without fieldhouse, or with some of the concepts, the different areas, the Mammoth, the entertainment, the housing. I think we need, we owe it to them to give them an idea of how we feel about that. How did you, I think, I think they're separate. Yeah, we need to keep them as separate conversations. Mr. Dunning? Or Mr. Busek?
Their conceptual presentations, I think it's to the pleasure of the council, whether you want to hear the next presentation and then weigh in on all of it, but to, I think to your point, Mayor Protem, this is the point in time at which if you have discomfort or concerns, that is helpful to share with the developer and with staff, so that we know what those types of matters are, so that we can hear that.
Yeah. Good, bad, ugly, whatever. I think it's appropriate for us to just give them feedback. So I would think the time is now, and not wait. We can give our opinion later, but when they walk away, this will be the last time we get a chance to really sit down with them and listen to their full concept. And if they don't get a good feeling, then they may not come back. So, yeah, for a fourth time, so.
Mayor Protem, one thing that I will offer, I will echo what Mr. Dunning just said. The conceptual presentations are your tool. It's something that's in the incentive policy, it's something that the city council, this city council and the summit uniquely provides to developers, so ultimately, it's up to you and the city council to decide how you'd like to use this tool. We typically have provided feedback at the end of a conceptual presentation, but as we've talked about, this is a very unique circumstance, because they're competing for one public asset that can only go in one place. So if there's a desire to hear the second presentation and then provide more feedback in addition to whatever feedback you might like to provide now, either way is fine with us. Like I said, this is the city council's tool to use as you see fit.
And that's fair, because there is that one common denominator, that both presentations have a critical component that does, will influence our opinion. So I'm okay with that. You guys okay, then? Go to the second presentation? Okay. Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, there's a couple of people that do want to speak. Councilmember Pryor, are you good? Do you want the floor?
I was just gonna say, I would rather hear the second one, especially if we're going to give them feedback on where the fieldhouse is going to go, because it's really hard to decide until we hear the second one. But if you want our only hesitations, my only hesitation is, I just think that that land that surrounds Shamrock is beautiful, and to see it developed, which I know it eventually will get developed, to see it developed right now, I think, I think we might get a lot of pushback from some people that live around there, which I think is...
Can you clarify, so I have it in my mind's eye, are you talking about the golf course itself, or you said around it? Which Councilwoman Pryor land are you referring to right there?
All of the land around, well, the golf course, too, but I understand they're not selling it, and it's not getting developed right now. Just the land around it, that's...
You're saying it would be sad to see it developed versus leave it as it is, that some people might be disappointed?
Yes. I know that, and I don't even know what I'm allowed to say, I guess, but I know that there was a development that was proposed down there, and it got, it hasn't been, hasn't come before us, it's just, but it was, it got a lot of pushback because of apartments and rental, and so I do think that this development would probably get quite a bit of pushback, maybe by people that live around there that aren't ready to have apartments or anything right there, so, yeah.
Mayor Protem?
Yes.
Echoing what everybody said, you should, the council will do whatever it wants to do in terms of sequencing here. Can I throw out an idea, and I'll sit down, just a thought?
Sure.
Because I am thinking about four people with a lot of investment, like, literally, you come out of here, and it's, we pack up, lick our wounds, or we truly start spending tens and then hundreds of thousands of dollars, and come back and see you. Everything I said at the end of my presentation. So one way to approach this would be to pretend that the Parks Department doesn't locate here, and give us feedback on everything else, because as I said, insert my answer, I won't repeat it a minute ago, like, we'd be disappointed, because there's some major synergies and everything we said. But if you gave us feedback on everything else, and we're certainly gonna stay here and listen to the other great project north of us, then that would tell us a ton, and then it's just, that's just an add-on factor if there's ultimately, at the end of this evening, information given on, gosh, the council feels like this site or that site would be the best place for Parks. Does that make sense? That just helps us even more understand, but that baseline for everything else we proposed would be so helpful right now, because otherwise, I actually don't know what we're gonna do when we walk out of this meeting, if that makes sense. And I appreciate, understand that you will figure that out, you all, what you want to do, but that would be helpful.
Sure. Thank you. The board is lighting up now. So Councilmember Hauntz.
Thank you. So I was just gonna say a quick few things that I thought were great. Again, I'm with Councilmember Pryor. I love the Mammoth golf, we need something that's entertainment, we say that all the time. So if that could come, that would be top of the list for me personally. I love the villas for the 55-plus, I think they're beautiful. It's a concept that we need more of, and I love the layout. Some things, I know you say you didn't have any LOIs, but just to throw this out there, because you said you wanted feedback, the pictures that you do have of the businesses, again, I know that you're not committed to them, but they're all, this is just me throwing this out there, they're all of what we already have, and that's kind of what, I know some of us up here, especially myself, is tired of seeing people bring to us is, oh, we're getting something new, but it's just a duplicate of what we already have. And I just, we want to see new things that we don't already have, and things that, you know, we don't have to keep driving to Kansas side to go get. So, but that's really all the feedback I have for now, so.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Carlyle.
Thank you. I just wanted to say thank you for bringing this forward. I was not here to see the other two times, so this is the first time I've seen it, looks good to me. I would just say, I had a couple of questions, but through your presentation, I think you answered them, or at least they're not clear what the answer is yet. But I got the senior in the townhomes part, that looks great. And then in the other residential part, you said, besides the multifamily, obviously, that's gonna be for rent, but you said the other parts, like the townhomes, or whatever that's gonna be, could be for rent, could be for sale, we don't know yet, because you don't know yet what's gonna be there, right?
The shortest answer that I think will resonate with you is, we want to go to market. So if market, right now, as you know, with interest rates, you're not seeing a ton of new home building for sale, but if interest rates change and that's attractive, our team... but if interest rates change and that's attractive, our team, insert all the pictures and the bios I did at the beginning, remember the really nice single family, we're completely capable of doing that if that's what the market demands. We just, you know, the saying, we'd be lying, you know what I mean? Like, we'd be lying if we said we know what's gonna happen with all that residential buildout of 60 acres over the next six or seven years. So, we're gonna do what the market demands, but we're limiting to that one phase of multifamily with Chapter 100. That's the one thing we put a cap on based on feedback from council.
And I think the Mammoth is, is exciting as well. It's, I like that idea. I'm not sure so much about having it right next to a golf course, but hey, whatever you guys want to do, it's the market, right? They will play it out. As far as where the Field House goes, I'm here nor there on that, and I really don't think that's our decision to make. That's between you guys and parks, so if you get it, good for you. If you don't, I'm so sorry. I don't, I don't know how else to say that. I think, I think really that's all I had, but I would echo exactly what, um, Councilmember Hodges said, and with those pictures and all the things we already have, we would really like something we don't have. That would be great, so, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Shields.
Thank you. Actually, I have a, a couple of questions first, based on some comments from my fellow council members. And I think these are probably mainly to Mr. Bushak. As far as, um, new uses, like, once, if, if this is approved, more or less the way that it is, like, it, it gets zoned for commercial or multifamily or mixed use or whatever, but how much, how much input, other than just saying to the developer, we'd love to see some new stuff, can we have on that? Like, because, like, if it's zoned to allow a sit-down restaurant, they can put in any sit-down restaurant, right? Like, there's not really a good way to really steer that?
Well, so there are some tools that you have available. In the past, the city has used prohibited land use lists in the TIF contract. We've used, um, approved tenant lists in TIF contracts. These, I'm talking about things that the developer, a developer typically doesn't like, because it's a restriction on their otherwise free development, but restricted land uses, pre-approved tenants are techniques, tools that we've used in the TIF contract. It's also fairly common for the city council to have approval of, um, any tenant that goes in over a certain size, if it's not on the pre-approved tenant list, for example. And then there's also a provision in the TIF Act, which provides how eats are calculated if a business relocates from an existing location in the city to, to the TIF area. The default under the TIF Act is, if there's an existing business in the city, and it relocates into the TIF area within one year after closing the previous location, then the base sales at the previous location are imputed to the new location in the TIF, which means we wouldn't be capturing 50% of all the sales tax dollars. We'd only be capturing 50% of the increase over the base that is transferred from the previous location. So, if there's, so, it, and, and another tool is, the TIF contract could provide that you can't relocate any businesses in the city. I've seen that in other, I've written that into contracts for other cities. So, in, in that case, there's an absolute prohibition on any sort of relocation, despite the TIF Act provision that I just said. So, there's all these tools that are available.
But it wouldn't prohibit, like, just a new location of, to not pick on a particular restaurant, but a new Chipotle or whatever, from, just the fact that there is one already wouldn't prohibit?
Correct. We typically address closing one store and relocating, and the cannibalization that goes, goes on with that. You know, the negative effect, and we've talked about this in, in previous projects, the negative effect of taking an existing business, closing it, opening it in the TIF area, and then capturing some of those dollars, it's a net loss to the, the sales taxing districts in that case.
It's potentially lighting that other area.
Correct. And then all the other negative effects that are associated with the vacancy that's created from the previous space.
And then I just had a, just a question about process. Who, who will make the decision on where the Field House goes? Like, does the city council have much input in terms of that contract? I mean, other than, I know it's, it's all kind of tied up together with the incentives, but, like, at the end of the day, whose call is that to which?
So, ultimately, the Parks Department. The placement of the Field House and expenditure of the Parks Department money to build the Field House, that's a decision of the Parks Department. The Field House is before you with this request, and as you'll see in the next request, because a portion of the incentive package is tied to the Field House specifically. And in this case, as we've already talked about, some of these TIF dollars here would be used to build the parking facility for the Field House, so that becomes a Parks Department asset, so that interweaves the Park, Parks decision and the Field House decision into your incentive decision, because a piece of your incentive decision goes to the Field House.
Sort of have the ability to veto a site, so if we don't give it the incentive, it doesn't provide parks necessarily what they need, but we don't have the ability to guarantee a site, kind of?
Yes, that, that's, that's an option.
A good way to, it helps me to frame the, the decision that we're making up here. Given all that, I think, not surprising, based on my earlier comments, I think it's a good project, and especially if I don't have to be the one picking favorites of the sites. If parks were to pick this site, I would fully support that. And if they don't, if there's a way to move forward with this development without it, I think that makes sense. The level of incentive seems well within, um, the range that we're accustomed to, maybe even on the lower end of that range, and I think it would activate, um, a large area that should be developed. Like, it's, it's, um, at the intersection of two highways, like, there's no reason, there's a lot of land that we can leave vacant, but like, that makes sense, and it's gonna develop eventually, but it's gonna need some help, so I think this makes a lot of sense, so. I would be supportive, and I, and I appreciate the developer taking our comments from prior presentations into account and kind of adjusting those incentives and, uh, not asking for all the city sales tax and all that. So, I, I appreciate, um, that that feedback has been incorporated. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Reader.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Okay, um, I think it's a lovely project. There's some amazing parts to the project. However, I will tell you this, um, I'm, I wouldn't support any apartments. And so, and the reason I'm saying that is that we know that we have lack of inventory here. We know we have, we know we have a problem for people that want to own homes that can't buy homes, because we don't have homes available now. The townhomes would, could fit that bill, uh, getting seniors into homes would fit that bill. But we have residents here, as you probably know, in Lee Summit, that are just really pushing back on more and more apartments, and it seems like every project that comes before us says we have to have them. Well, I think we want to know that we're gonna partner, because you mentioned we were partnering, with a developer that really sees what we need here, and that is the path to homeownership for people that want to buy homes. So, um, other than that, I mean, I, I, again, I think it's a, it's a, it's a great project. I'd love to see a Topgolf sort of thing, a recreational area like that. I, I think that would be amazing, and I would hope that no matter whether the Field House goes here or not, that you guys would still consider coming here, because we'd love to have you, so. That's all I have. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you. All right, Councilmember Demoral.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Mr. Peterson, as always, appreciate your presentation, your, your, you know, your plain and simple explanation, and I do appreciate your pivots that you mentioned. That was, that was a refreshing, uh, thought process. Notwithstanding, the, the Field House is the shiny object, and I think we'll see that in the other presentation too. The, a couple of the things I do like, like about this plan is the 55-plus. 55-plus Villas, Town Homes, I, I think that's a, that's a market that is under, you, undersaturated here in Lee Summit. I know I get calls frequently about what's available for 55-plus, and there are a few things going up, and, uh, people tend to get excited about that product. The, the Mammoth Sports Center is a plus. You know, I do appreciate your comment that, um, that it was, it's probably a standalone facility in itself. It is, is, it's, it's that much wanted in Lee Summit, or that product, that product, sort of product. And as far as, uh, it's been called new things and same things, I, I too have the same feeling. I think that this location is far enough from the rest of the city that a, uh, a new array of commercial businesses could fit down there really nice, that wouldn't actually compete with other businesses, say, you know, in the Lakewood area, or on the west side, or even east side. That's what I do like about it. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you, Councilmember Demoral. So, what are you saying about the north side?
We have too many speakers.
All right, just checking. All right, uh, Councilmember Lovell.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. So, on the, the Mammoth Golf concept, are there any in existence right now that, like, are actually operating?
We've got several sites under development currently, excuse me. I, I want to say they have six letters of intent signed in different locations, kind of throughout the Midwest. I think one is, is fairly far along in Branson, but like I said, the operating group behind it are a bunch of former Topgolf executives, so they have, you know, uh, loads and loads of experience opening these and operating them successfully, and it's got a really solid shareholder group behind it. So, yeah, I think we feel very confident about it.
And then how binding is, like, an LOI? Like, so I know that when we are speculative here, I know you won't commit to certain things, but we've heard LOI for the golf concept, and LOI, I think, for the medical concept. Like, I mean, my always understanding is a letter of intent is simply that, but not anything binding. Is it fully executed up by both parties and?
Executed by both parties, but it's, it's non-binding, just like anything is, because it has contingencies around, you know, these sorts of approvals and such. But we feel confident about it. The, the medical concept is actually a concept that I'm a shareholder in, so I'm confident that that one will, will get completed. And, you know, I've been a partner with the Ferent family for a number of years now, know them very well. We're involved with a lot of things with them in golf in general, uh, not just this concept. They're working with me on the redevelopment of Hillcrest Golf Course just down the road. You know, they've done a lot of stuff all over the, the Midwest with us, uh, so now we're, we're very confident that they'll follow through.
Okay, great, thanks. So, I, so I just, my personal, um, thoughts on this, like, I would think a critical component to this, like, my approval or me, me supporting it would be that that Mammoth Golf concept was kind of like the anchor, like, that, that one would have to happen for me to be supportive. Now, I am, uh, a little bit of a dreamer these days, and I certainly understand development, and so where I see a greenfield space with a lot of challenges, um, uh, with development, infrastructure, things like that, I'm more, um, maybe romanticize the idea of softer commercial developments interwoven in between the residential, and that doesn't necessarily always support the financial mechanisms, like, you can get an A-credit tenant like Culvers or some of these other places that were mentioned there. But I do think there's a movement, and I do think communities are starting to wake up to, uh, the types of product and the types of restaurants and things that are being delivered in. And so, for me, like, something like that, I think, I think I could get behind. I just, to me, it would be something that would be softened, like, and I get, like, you would rather throw a Panera's in there, or a Culvers, or Cane's, or whatever, but I think, like, for the character of the community and the residential around there, I think with a greenfield space like that, like, we could create something more new urbanistic and, um, more cohesive, where retail mixes in with residential and less kind of pad, parking lot, mass development stuff. So, that's just my personal opinion about it, and it's not, I think, I think there's a lot of good components here, but just kind of where my head's at, so, thanks. Thank you. Yep.
Say one thing. I mean, so, so obviously, the, the Field House, or the, uh, the, the Parks Department facility to us is a huge catalyst, right? I mean, that's what we had themed the whole place on, so it's really important to us. So, you know, it's kind of the MVP, so if Patrick Mahomes gets hurt, you know, the backup comes in. We've got a pretty good backup. Mammoth, I think, is kind of a Carson Wentz-like guy, so, I, but that's how we'd have to re-theme it, redevelop around it. The Parks Department facility probably, probably allows us to go after Bobby Stroop Performance Center, probably allows us to go after Nectar, probably allows us to go after some things that are synergistic to what that use is. If it's Mammoth, we rethink that a little bit. If it's neither of those two, we're probably not interested, because we don't have that catalyst to, to make the site special. So, that just gives you a sense for, you know, we'll keep fighting if we don't get the Parks Department facility, but it's, it's a different challenge, and we're gonna have to rethink some things and, and come back with a different plan.
Thanks for that clarification. I think that's everyone, and I'll just add a couple more comments and not try to be redundant to what's been said already. So, again, you all came back and you listened to the previous couple times. You added features. I heard words like new product, uh, the retail mixture was a little bit more diverse. Some of the big box renderings are showing that I think you're, you're speaking to. The Mammoth is obviously a big component. You're wanting sincere feedback from us. I think you're getting it as far as, I don't think, as a body, we're ready to, to, to go there about the Field House. We have this pending presentation right after your guys' but, um, concept-wise, what, what you all are bringing to the table, I, I'm, I'm looking at our, my colleagues', you know, kind of notes and kind of giving you some numbers. You're, you're big on the numbers, trying to get an idea to gauge kind of support. I think you have one, two, three, four, five, including myself, six, that are in favor. Am I missing somebody? Oh, Councilmember Pryor, I didn't get you. She, do you want to elaborate?
Sure, I mean, I'm, Field House aside, I'm, I'm, I guess, not completely supportive, but kind of leaning that way if the Mammoth Golf thing can come. If not, then it honestly just looks like another development full of medical offices and fast food, as far as I'm concerned, from what I've seen. But with Mammoth, with Mammoth Golf, Golf, I, um, I think that that would tilt me more to the supportive side.
So, I'm counting one, two, three, four, five, six, seven potential yeses, that we'd like to at least not agree into everything, but, uh, again, conceptual, separate of the Field House, but you're getting pretty direct feedback on the Mammoth concept or component. And that makes or breaks your numbers, the Mammoth would, or, or Field House potentially. So, um, we're not prepared to answer the Field House question, but the Mammoth, I think it's something that we all would support and think could be viable. So, with that being said, you're, you've got majority of us that would be in support with, with some modifications to the mixture of, of, uh, of tenant mix and, and that, that sort of stuff. But, uh, so, I don't know if that's enough, uh, but I think you've heard some good, good questions, good comments, good feedback. Overall, we're not 100% there yet until we confirm up some of those. I know you have some LOIs, uh, in place, but, uh, kind of the key anchor type tenants, if, if, if you can commit some of those, I think would really help overall to push it over the top and get you all approved. As far as the incentives, uh, I think you all heard good feedback on the incentives. What we would be, you know, interested in, I think this falls within our ranges of other projects in Lee Summit, that I think overall, we collectively feel comfortable, that we'd be okay with your incentive requests overall. I don't, I don't, I think we're gonna stay away from any kind of city guarantee kind of obligations for other stuff, non-related to, um, well, if the Field House works, so, uh, I don't know if that's enough for you guys, but that's kind of where we're coming from. You good? Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Mr. Bushak, you guys want a break? Okay, Mr. Bushak, we're gonna take a 10-minute break, if that's all right? All right, thank you.
Welcome to the Lee Summit Sign Department. We are gonna walk you through our process from start to finish. We make signs as needed here. It's not like we just go out into the field and place a speed limit sign here, no parking here. Our traffic engineers, they go through and they'll do field studies. They'll send us down an engineering work order for us to go out, place new signs or remove signs as needed. Coming from the material, our blanks come in, and they're just aluminum blanks. We can put our white, our red, our, you know, our fluorescent yellow-green, whatever. And basically, what it looks like is just that there. Throw it up into the, the roller. And once we got it covered, take it to our work table here, and Tim will cut the corners, cut all the access off to where it's lined up right. As far as the plotter and the software that we use, there's a street name sign there, and he's gonna go ahead and print that out on the plotter, so you can see the plotter and how it operates and runs. There are standards for the height, even just on letters on the sign blank. Basically, what we have on the computer there is, it's pretty much set up to those. And it goes through, it's got a very small but sharp needle that goes through and cuts everything out, letter by letter. Once that's done, uh, cutting, our next stage would be bringing it over here. Currently picking out the signed letters right now. We call it weeding, or picking, or however you want to call it. Next, putting it on the transfer tape. Then after it's taped, we bring it over to the roller. That's where we apply it to the actual sign blank. And we'll roll it through one time just to get the air bubbles out. And the last stage is basically just taking the transfer tape off the front of it. And there's the finished product of the street name sign. We'll take you out to the field and show you our process that we go through. We're gonna go out and follow our sign guys, get something installed for you. This is where we check our underground utilities. Tim, you got AT&amp;T? EverG, Google, so we should be good to go. We normally put all of our stuff together out in the field. Then once the base is installed, we'll go ahead and put the post in there. We've come up to perfect. And that's how we do it. Simple, quick.
Traditionally, we think it's police officers, those responding to law enforcement needs within the community. But honestly, we are there to serve our citizens and our citizens do go into crisis. They do have mental health crises and we're being called to those scenes on a regular basis. In order to help serve those citizens better, we did initiate the Crisis Intervention Team Program. These are officers that are specially trained to de-escalate crisis situations. Recently, we've brought co-responders onto the scene, licensed qualified mental health professionals housed within our police department. And they respond with those officers directly to those scenes where a crisis is occurring so they can interact with that citizen and get them the help they need right there on that scene.
The co-responders are either a bachelor or master level in a behavioral health-related field. They wear plain clothes. They don't carry weapons or anything like that.
I have a police radio that I listen to all day, listen for, you know, those key words, mental health, behavioral health, crisis.
There's a lot of officers that just call for me. I have my own radio number.
I also have the ability to self-dispatch to them when, say, 982's in route.
Officers in route, 914 armed, drawn, ready, armed.
So typically I arrive after they've made it safe. I'll make contact and get kind of the rundown and then I just kind of jump right in.
Like, hey, you know, my name's Allison. I'm a mental health professional. I'm here to help you. I'm not here to take you to jail or arrest you.
Sometimes all a person needs is a voice, someone neutral, someone outside that, you know, can listen. I do a lot of safety planning, including family, their support network, who's close to you. If they're home alone, who can come over and hang out with you today? Can we lock away your sharps? Can we put up your meds? Do you need meds? Can we get you over to the urgent care to get you assessed for your medications? Some of them also are like, oh, I'm so glad you came. This made me feel so much better.
Our main goal as the co-responders is to, one, get people connected to the services that they need and also divert from emergency rooms and jails.
And they almost get a different view of the police responding. That lets me know you care and the officers care.
Lee Summit Police, can we help you?
My husband has...
In 2020, we had 722 mental health-related calls for service. 2022, by that time, 1,479. These mental health-related calls for service are increasing. How we're responding to that is increasing the number of Crisis Intervention Team officers we have available as well as the number of co-responders we have available to respond on these calls.
So what I think is important for the community to know about the co-responder program is that we're here, we exist. All you have to do when you call 911 is ask for us, you know, say, hey, I want a co-responder to respond to this crisis and we'll go. I was really struggling about eight years ago, my personal journey with mental health. And I met some amazing social workers and amazing programs that have helped me get to where I am today. I really couldn't see myself doing anything else. We want to help and that's what we love to do.
So I had a client, we got a call, she had some suicidal ideations and she really felt that she had nobody. And, you know, in getting to know her story and getting to know who comes around and sees you, well, then we found a support person and they responded immediately and we made a plan. I called back and checked on her in an hour and then I checked on her in two hours. We were able to get her into the additional services to where she talks to someone every week or more. I just took a person that really just thought they had nobody and nobody would show up for them and show them you do. And you'll be amazed who is in your corner if you just simply say, I need a little help.
When the person called on the phone, she said that there was a dinosaur walking down her road. Of course, we had to go out and check that out. We get out there and it was a big African tortoise, probably 60 pounds, walking down the road. When they walk, they really stand up tall. So I could see why she thought it was a dinosaur. I'm Rodney Wagner. I'm the manager of Lee Summit Animal Control. So as you can see, we get all sorts of animals here. You have some guinea pigs off to the side. All the windows up here are animals that are adoptable right now. Every one of these dogs is ready to go and ready for adoption. And the same thing with our cats over here. A lot of cool cats in here now, so. So this is our three-acre lot we have out back and this is where we do all the walk-in dogs, exercise. We also have a side yard off the side over there so we can let them run loose. They can run together and then we have what's called play groups. Kind of like having a bunch of kids. Here's our vet room. We have a vet that comes out twice a week. This is our Sally Port where we bring the animals into. This is one of our animal control trucks. And we can hold up to six animals. We have a lift on the other side to put big animals in. We actually have temperature gauges in here and in the truck to tell how hot it is. Once it gets to a certain temperature, we bring all the animals back here immediately. So this actually has traps in it, but. We do a lot of wildlife trapping. I mean, a lot. So. Bats, pot-bellied pigs, horses, cows, emus, a lot of reptiles. We had a citizen one time that had over 200 reptiles in his basement. Caymans and alligators in here that are four or five feet long, you can't keep those. And people do. And they're surprised when they can't keep them. I'm like, really? You're surprised you can't have an alligator in here? Our main goal here is public safety and also the safety of the animals. And we have very dedicated people back there and they definitely stay here for the love of the animals, which also includes getting them adopted out. We'll have about 4,000 impounded animals a year, probably about close to 2,000 are dogs and cats. The cats and dogs, when they get impounded here, they go on a five-day hold. And then after the five days, if the owner doesn't show up, then we can put them up for adoption. Adopt a animal here is actually really simple. You just come in, look for whatever animal you're looking for, find the right pick. You have, you go to the adoption room up there and see if you get along with them. You spend as much time as you want to in there. From that point on, it's just a matter of making sure they're spay or neutered and all their vaccinations up to par and they're good to go. We have a very high adoption rate because we try everything in our power to get animals adopted out. We have Heart of America, a humane society that we do a lot of adoptions through. And then we also have other groups. We have some people that literally will just look all over the country for somewhere for a dog to go. And we sent dogs up into South Dakota, North Dakota, Washington State. So it's actually, it's a huge united effort to get all these animals home.
Tarzan's got lots of energy. Hazel's got a weird meow. Bellbell, she wants nothing to do with the other cats. She'll kind of get her grumpy face going.
And the good thing about the people here is that they get all their friends to get animals too. All of us have probably the limit of all the animals that we can have at home. You know, they are huge animal lovers. If it was up to the people here, we'd have 15 cats running around in here. We had a citizen one time out there and he was bathing his two nine-foot-long boa constrictors in the front yard. Apparently I was gardening some attention and so we went out there and had to talk to him about that. Do I do this job? Oh dude, I love this job. I grew up on a farm and taking care of that many animals, you can't help but like animals. This is just like fancy farming. You know, you're just bringing the animals in here, taking care of them and finding them homes and yeah, absolutely animal lover.
I'm Assistant Chief Jim Eden.
And I'm Battalion Chief Ben Hicks.
And today we're at Lee Summit Fire Station 3. Fire Station 3 was part of the 2016 No Tax Increase General Obligation Bond for Public Safety Initiative. The station was built and occupied in August of 2020. Unfortunately, due to the pandemic, we've not been able to give tours or have an actual ribbon cutting. So we want to invite you in today to give you the opportunity to see what goes on within the Lee Summit Fire Department Station.
Let's go take a tour. This is all right.
All right. Thank you all for allowing us to take a little break. So now we are still on conceptual presentations and we have, as we've talked about, one additional presentation. So Mr. Bushak, will you kick it off or?
This is our second conceptual presentation for the Oldham Village Project by Drake Development. Drake will present first and then I will have my comments, which will be similar to what you just heard, but I'll run through this project with my analysis after they present.
Great. Thank you.
Okay, thank you all. I'm sure everyone's exhausted from the last two hours. That group did a great job. And I'm gonna first introduce myself, but Matt Pennington with Drake Development, President, 7200 West 132nd Street out of Oldham Park, Kansas. Just kind of just delving tailing of how that one ended. Again, I do, I do not look at us both as competing. I really don't. We've had this discussion all week and I do like where they're going with that project. And I think that the most exciting thing about tonight is that 291's alive, right? I think, I don't think any of us can disagree with that, with both projects that you've seen in 2024 or on 291. So I think just as we head into tonight, it's pretty easy to see where most of your growth's going and seeing where the Mormon church is now letting land go. And as things all start heading that direction, I think we do need to look at a global picture. And I think it's refreshing seeing you all do that. I'll start a little bit about our development. I think most of you are aware of where it's at. It is the Adessa Auto Auction at 291 and 50. I saw you all a few months ago, it feels like, when we were just coming back in for an S U P on some of those trucks that have been parked out there. And I get calls and people telling me every day, when are they going away? And I say, I really hope soon. So we've been on this project for almost three years now. And these big, big projects with tons of extraordinary costs just take a long time, takes a lot of effort. My team is here tonight with Drake Development. I've got all but two of our folks here. They have worked tirelessly on this project, day in and day out, meeting with people, dealing with easements, dealing with MODAT, dealing, and we'll get into this, but all those things matter because it takes such a long time to be able to come here and see you today. We're not coming with a half-baked project. When I look at you today, I can say, hey, if we can figure this out, dirt's moving and tenants are coming. So as we move forward, I'm gonna give a little bit about, I mean, you've seen most of our stuff here. Everybody knows Streets of West Prior. I thought it was interesting. I didn't even really think about this, but only one tenant is not new to the market at Streets of West Prior. It's Starbucks. And so I think if you look at that, that's pretty remarkable, right? I mean, we didn't do that by design, but if you look at projects that are successful, some of those users there, we took losses on, on the properties themselves to be able to make sure that we had those tenants. And so some of those different things that we sacrificed to guarantee that we're gonna get new users to the market is exactly what you'll see as we head down Oldham Village. You can see some of our other projects. You've seen the downtown project that we just did here with the Tap House. It's been an overwhelming success. It's fun to really be part of the downtown. We've had Albe Lardos, we've had small projects, big projects. We really love the city of Lee Summit. I look at our group as one of the best in the industry of locating some of the best users in the country. We've done two TopGolfs, one in Omaha, one in Albuquerque. We travel. You're not gonna see a lot of our other projects that are on here, but I just, I say that because we do locate the best users. And I put Jack Henry on here because we located Puttery and we brought Chief's Fit to the Plaza in a time of need. And so as we look at Oldham Village tonight, Oldham Village is in a time of need. And it's a site that has been, it's been blighted and neglected and problem for 30 years. And so as we look at this and it's, you know, it's an industrial site today, how are we gonna change that? How do we look at retailers to say, hey, we want this to change? And so that's, part of that is not only credibility, it's control. And it's, that's how you get the commitments to these new developments. I just said most of my team's here except for two. So one of them's in Florida having a lot better time than us. Here's the project. It's Adessa. There's a lot of parcels here. I'll get into how we got to where we are today in a second. Here's a before and after. I always like to get renderings. Streets of West Prior had renderings. It was like, how do we get to the finish line? This is how we get tenant commitments. They not only believe we're gonna finish, but they know, they see the vision and these buildings that you see on this, this before and after shot, this is where we hope to go. Yes, you see the Fieldhouse out there. That was one of the points that we're obviously vying for tonight. And we'll get into why we think that's a good opportunity for our site. Here's just some more shots. This is just looking other directions. Really, development, if you look, if you look at it, it's just common sense. If you look at each of the, if you look at the direction towards Summit Waves, what's over there? A civic property. It's Summit Waves, it's Harris Park. So what do you locate next to civic properties? If you just look around and you put things together, to us, that's how the Fieldhouse kind of came to fruition. And that's when we started the discussions with Joe Snook and said, hey, Joe, this kind of makes sense. This, if people are gonna come into town, they're coming from Iowa and Nebraska and they're gonna play at some of these sporting events. They could be at Harris Park, they could go to Summit Waves and they're going back and forth to each of these locations. Well, how do we give them the best experience? Well, let's give them new-to-market users. Let's give them restaurants. Let's give them retail. So that's kind of how our vision was hatched and that's how we planned this site. I have a lot of renderings. We'll just kind of blow through some of these. So the challenges are immense. There's just a lot of them on this site. This is a, this is an infill redevelopment. This is not greenfield. This, like I said before, it's highly blighted. And it's not blighted in one property. It's blighted in almost every property as you go down that road. And that's why the industrial feel has been a major feel since 30, 40 years. If you look across the street, those were the proposals that had came in a year ago, two years ago, to try and do industrial buildings across the street. Well, why? Well, because industrial is on the other side. And so as we set out to try and make a property that was mixed-use, how do we change that focus and vision? Well, this is how we believe we get there. So the multiple blighted properties, obviously an issue, very expensive. We have to buy businesses that are blighted themselves, tear down their buildings and take it back to greenfield. So we've made a huge commitment already to this site. We're over $15 million in commitment of our own cash into this deal in addition to probably almost $1 million in soft costs. So what do tenants believe? They know that we're gonna do it. We're here. We have all the properties in tow. We have control. We're gonna move forward. And so if you look at some of the biggest projects in the country, they usually are involved with complex assemblages. And there's different ways to do the assemblages. You can, you can close fast, you can try and hold on to the property for a long time. But if you look at Streets of West Prior, let's just go back there. I owned that ground for seven years before you saw me. And I started assembling those properties as we went. Well, my last piece was from Red Development. Finally got it over the edge and we got to move forward. Well, in Oldham Village, we've been assembling these for three years. People don't like uncertainty. All of us are the same. These people on these sites want to know that it's gonna happen, just like you do. So we've had to close on properties fast, knowing that, hey, we believe in ourselves, that we're gonna get this project out of the ground and get the tenants to the finish line. So I say all that and it's a long-winded explanation of assemblage, but I can't really emphasize enough, that's the difference between great developments and not great developments is can you get the assemblage done? And we have. So if you look at some of the other problems, the regional sanitary sewer upgrades, I'm just gonna kind of blow through these here. You can see this is what it looks like out there. We've all seen it. I don't have to tell you much more, but here's the actual property assemblage map. The green is what we own. The blue is what we have under control. Three and four, we are close to having agreements on those. The only parcels we'd have left are five and six, which is less than an acre. But we've planned for it. Everything has been planned for, for the future, when we potentially do get those properties. So it's been a long, long time. It's 24 months assemblage. It's really probably 30-plus, but we are finally here in front of you to present it. The regional sanitary sewer is one of the biggest issues that you've seen on this site. This is what stops the development in many cases. We heard that from the presentation earlier. What is stopping things from developing? Well, in this case, the sewer is a big one. The sewer for us to get out of the ground is $3 million. Now, what that does is by us, if we pay that $3 million, it unlocks a lot of other property, and we'll get into that in a second. Here's the actual boundaries of the sewer district we're talking about. Runs all the way to Hy-Vee, goes along 50 Highway, goes into downtown. These are, this is the actual watershed sewer district that we're trying to upsize and then allow future development on not only our parcel, but on the parcel to the east. Roadway relocation improvements per the envisioned Lee Summit plan. This envision was done with Bob McKay, 15, 20 years. We all remember that name. He came up with some crazy, crazy plans, and we went through those on streets, and it took five or six renditions. It's funny, because on this one, this vision's actually really come to reality, and it looks like he knew what he was actually doing. So if you look at this roadway, we 100% agree with the thought process of what he was, where it was heading. And I think at the council at the time agreed as well. But if you look, that roadway has to come through there, allows us to get some more pad sites out on 50. MODOT, this is another big, big challenge. This has taken us over two years to come up with buying MODOT property, relinquishing some of our roadway back, dedicating Oldham Parkway back to the city. These are different items that have all been in process. Undergrounding of the power lines. If this is feasible, I always love to do this because it helps get premium tenants. And if you look at streets, streets was difficult because we had the high-tension power lines. They were tough to bury, and sometimes you just can't do it. But in this case, this will be a huge amenity to the property. The regional stormwater conveyance system, you can see it needs to be reconstructed and go through the property. A lot of people don't realize how much grade's on this site. It's 30-some feet from the top to the bottom. You see all those trucks out there, and you really just don't realize how much grade there is from the top to the bottom. So we are going to have to bring in fill and actually have to make this more of a flat site. So the city goals, the comprehensive development of the property on the 291 and 50 interchange, this was always an envisioned Lee Summit, establish high-quality gateway community at the prime commercial location. This has probably been the hardest. How do we change the mindset from this being an industrial site to a mixed-use site? We believe we've done that. Promote walking and bicycling with connectivity. Lee Park is right behind our site. We have an area that will be connecting to that park with, as part of our basin. And you'll see that here in some renderings upcoming. The adjacent public park, Greenway, other public and civic use. This was things that were called out in the envisioned Lee Summit plan. So for this area, a civic use was called out in the envisioned Lee Summit plan 15, 20 years ago. A diverse range of commercial, residential, civic uses within the ADP. This was all part of it. Our plan all mimics that now. So some of the city benefits, I'll get into the catalyst for redevelopment and show you why that's so important. But the benefits are it achieves, it achieves a market-driven development in harmony with envisioned Lee Summit. This is important. It sets the stage. Allow the development of a property that's been largely underutilized, heavily blighted. Obviously, that's just logical. Seizes critical window of opportunity. We're here. We've been able to assemble them. We have the tenants in tow, and we'll go over those in a second. Upgrades to sanitary sewer benefiting the 835 acres. The sanitary sewer is extremely important for the growth of the 291 corridor. We're going to take care of that. Upgrades or the integrates adjacent park, just went over that, and then creates new tax revenues for the city. This is the biggest piece. By us getting this sewer out of the ground and us paying for the sewer, the developer paying for the sewer, the $3 million, it allows almost 130 acres on the east side to be redeveloped. So what this looks like is a gateway project that truly, development breeds development. If we can change the area to look like a mixed-use development, guess what follows? More higher-revenue tax-based types of users, not industrial. So not saying that couldn't happen, but I think the way this is set up, and if this plan is approved, this will change this intersection forever. It allows, you'll see much higher and better users that are going to use that east side. Here's the site plan. If you look at the pads out front, we have commitments. Our tenants have signed. We have Q39 signed, Chick-fil-A signed, Starbucks signed. We're in the middle of negotiating with a grocery store right now. It would be new-to-market. Again, and then an entertainment concept as well, which we have deals signed. The deals on the board here you see are signed. We have an additional four that are signed that I will release here as we continue down with deliberations. And then you see the Field House. It's labeled as Lee's Park, Lee Summit Parks and Recreation. This is, the Field House is not a, the question was asked earlier, do we, do you have to have the Field House? We don't have to have the Field House, but we'd have to change it to apartments. And when we were going through all the discussions with council and others, it's like, hey, can we find something else other than apartments? Well, and then as you looked around and how everything kind of fit together, the Field House really came together, and it made a ton of sense. The tenants, in a lot of big-box retail deals like I've done in the past, they would require co-tenancy. The restaurants would say, hey, you have to have these tenants. Well, these restaurants aren't saying we have to have anybody. These restaurants are saying, hey, we believe that you're going to take this project to the next level, and we know that you're going to turn this project into something good. When we've shown the Field House, it's been nothing but positive. It hasn't been, hey, we don't want this here. But just to reiterate, if we didn't do the Field House, we would have to come back in for a different use request. I'm going to back up a second. This is important to us on the mixed-use development. Drake Development is a fully-integrated developer. What that means is that we're not going out asking to get other people to build our stuff. We're building it all our own. We're building the apartments, we're self-developing everything that you see out there. So we're not waiting on someone else on a speculative-type situation to hope they're going to do it for me. And that was one of the biggest things as we morphed out of Streets of West Prior, and we've done, we're under construction with Miriam right now, and another project that you'll hear about shortly. We are fully-integrated, which means we can look at you in the face and say, what we're promising is we're going to build it, and we're not waiting on anyone. So if we look at this, and we go into the incentive package, this is a mixed-use development. So if you look at the mixed uses, we almost have 50% restaurant retail. We only have 19.38% multifamily. We have 18% civic and 14.9% others. So this is a true mixed-use development. So that's how we look at any project. It has to be looked as a whole. We're not coming in with just retail, we're not coming in with just a multifamily. This is one small community that's coming out of the ground. Here's a few more renderings. This is just looking up over the top. Here's a few more. You can see the detention basin will make into a pretty nice feature that will be, have access to the park. We did work with Joe Snook on Lowenstein Park, which has been an absolute huge success. So we've had, we have a great relationship, working relationship with Joe, and are comfortable with each other. These are just some of the shots. Here's the apartments. These are not final in terms of the look. This is what Q39 is going to look like. You'll see this submitted immediately with our PDP plans. This user, if approved, and distant to Chick-fil-A and a number of our other ones, they will be delivered immediately. We're not going out fishing. We are delivering you what we're saying on this site plan. This is a non-speculative development. So you see, what you see is what you get. This is the entertainment user, which we will announce. Just more looking northwest. And then into the incentives. So what gets this project out of the ground? What public-private partnership is it going to take? I can tell you, it looks almost like Streets of West Prior. It's very similar to Streets of West Prior in the type of structure, which includes a TIF. It's 100% eligible increment. I'm going to let David Busek get into the nitty-gritty numbers. I don't want to bore you with a ton of those. The sales tax on the TIF on the commercial portion of the project, 50% of the eligible increment would be received back to the project for our reimbursables. There would be a CID. This is the one nuance that is different than Streets of West Prior. The CID is for an off-site boundary, which I'll show you here in a second. In this case, that would pick up folks that are not only in, that have received benefits from the interchange, but are also in the sewer district watershed. And so that's how those boundaries were determined. The LCRA project boundaries look somewhat similar, and it's just, it's a mechanism that is required for our project to get out of the ground. Out of that, we're proposing a 1% CID on years 1 through 10 to the developer at 100% to the project. And years 11 through 27, a 75%, 25% developer project capture and 25% city capture. We're also requesting a TDD. This would be also 100% received by the project. And then the real estate abatement on the multifamily. I know I've said this about the mixed-use development. It has to be looked at as a whole. We're trying to solve for a gap and get this out of the ground. So we're not coming in with just a multifamily project. This is a function of what is that number it takes to get this project out of the ground. So in this case, we are requesting a 75% real estate tax abatement on the multifamily. There is 303 units planned of the multifamily. Beyond that, that would be the civic space and the entertainment user. So we did eliminate a lot of our units from previous discussions that we had had previously with all. And then we would request a sales tax exemption on construction materials. Here's the boundaries of the CID. You can see, in this case, it reaches up to Hy-Vee, they're in the sewer district. It reaches over to Home Depot, Aldi, those properties, and then it reaches over the east side. In this case, we believe with all the support from the neighbors that we already have, we have the votes to create this CID. And this CID allows us, again, to get the project out of the ground. This is the, this is the actual Field House component, and this is the nuance to our side of it. In our, because of how much money it's costing, this is not a greenfield. This is a redevelopment infill site, or redevelopment taking it back to greenfield, which costs a lot of money. And so in our situation, we have proposed to the city a $5.1 million purchase for the 8.5 acres that's shown here in green. And out of that, $550,000 would be paid for by the parks, and then the remaining balance of the $4.6 million value would be reimbursed back by the city's portion of their sales tax. The sales tax numbers we're showing bring back in excess of $6.7 million to the city. So we would be capped at the $4.6 million NPV number, and the city would be given the remainder of those dollars above and beyond when we get reimbursed for the remainder part of the land. We would deliver the property in rough-graded condition with utilities stubbed to the parcels, where Joe Snook can take his plans and start the Field House almost immediately upon us delivering that site. And I'm looking at you today saying, if we can figure this out, we will be delivering that site to him. He has a deal with us under these conditions. So I think that's important as we look at timing for this. This is a great time to try and get work. It's not easy to finance projects right now. It's good to see we have another person actually trying to do projects. It's not easy with the interest rates. But I think Joe has a really unique opportunity to try and get some competitive numbers on his Field House. And I think the timing of this is important. And the most important to ours is we're not asking for any special obligation bonds. There is no risk to the city on this. This is, if my users don't perform, I don't get paid back my 4.6. I'm taking that debt on, and I'm putting my money into this deal. If my users don't show up and they don't do the numbers I'm saying, I lose money, not the city. If they do what I'm saying and they do great, the city makes money. And that's how our proposal's put together. This is the actual numbers. The TIF property tax equates to $3.6 million. The TIF sales tax equates to $8.8. The CID is large. This is mostly public improvements. That's what mostly CID funds. We have a lot of public improvements. The TDD equates to $3.1, and the multifamily tax real estate abatement is $3.2. For the total incentive package request is $39.8. You're going to see this as a different number in David Busek's project packet because he included the city's reimbursement of the $4.6. And so that'll be different in his package. I just want to note that, and I'll let him talk about it why. In our incentive package request, cost versus project costs, we're showing $22.51. When you add the city's sales tax back in, it takes it to about 24%, I believe. And again, I'll let David get into that. With that, this is our before and after. We really are excited to try and get started. The users out here have been fantastic. I know, just like streets, once we get started and we get those right users, everything takes care of itself. So we're asking for that pass and would love to receive feedback on really everything in the Field House.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation. Mr. Busek.
All right. I'm going to start my discussion. I'm going to start with the previous presentation that I provided to the city council back in November. I know it's getting late, but I'm not going to go through the whole presentation. But this is a reminder of certain points that I will highlight for you. And I know the two council members have not seen this before, which is another reason I thought it'd be helpful to go through this. And I will relate this to the discussion as we get into the developers' project. So just to hit a couple of the high points from this discussion we had back in November. This was a public hearing regarding the LCRA redevelopment plan that the city council approved for this area. The problem is lack of state funding for the highway projects, and specifically the 291 North interchange project that the city is going to be undertaking soon in a partnership with the state. So what we presented to you was a possible solution to use the LCRA plan that you've already approved and the CID that we'll be talking about tonight as a funding source to lessen the impact to the city and to reimburse the city. That was the point of this presentation. This is the map showing the substantial amount of investment that the city has partnered with the state to put into Highway 50 and these interchanges to make this a more viable area and to cause redevelopment. This is the project that will be undertaken soon. The letting for this project is now scheduled for September of this year. On paper, it's a $22 million interchange project. And I pointed out to you back in November that we're anticipating, based on inflation, that the cost overruns will be up to $3 million that the city will have to fund. And also, at the time that I gave this presentation, we were assuming about $18 million in costs to relocate Troop A. That number's changed. We have actual dollars, which I'll comment on, but this is the issue that we were trying to address. I won't go through this whole slide here. This was my explanation of how we got to the final numbers, and this is what I showed you back in November, that our focus is to reimburse the city for this amount, $4.1 million, that the city has already come out of pocket for to relocate the Missouri Highway Patrol Troop A facility, and then up to $3 million of anticipated cost overruns for the interchange, and we'll know what that number looks like in September. So the LCRA plan, as it's been approved by the city council, authorizes reimbursement up to the $7.1 million. This is the LCRA map that was approved by the city council back in 2014, which served as the basis for the plan that you've already approved, showing this project here. And all of this is in the LCRA area. This is the TIF plan that the council's also approved for the 291 North area, which is a potential reimbursement source. Just wanted to point that out. That's something else that's already in place to reimburse the city. This, then, is the map of that LCRA plan that you've already approved back in November. And this is the boundaries of the areas in which we anticipate seeing projects coming forward, which I won't elaborate on now, but we're obviously seeing the first of what we are hopeful to be many projects moving forward, including QuickTrip, that will be relocating their site as part of this interchange project. I gave you an example of how the funding could work. And then this is the actual budget for the project today. So the slide that I used back in November was our estimate. And this is that same chart that shows the actual costs of the Troop A relocation. I'm not going to walk through all of these numbers, but I'll highlight, mouse doesn't work on this, right? The, I'll highlight the main point at the bottom. If you look at the funding summary down at the bottom, total cost of the interchange project, I'm trying to use the mouse again. The total cost of the interchange project is $24 million. Actual Troop A relocation is this number, $13.6. Shows what the state's funding and what the city's commitment is. And you'll see there's a substantial city commitment. It's these two numbers here, $13 million plus $7 million. And this is the amount that we're hopeful that the city can be reimbursed through the LCRA CID combination that we'll talk more about in a moment. So that's the main takeaway. We're looking for reimbursement to the city from this tool. Now, back to the developers, I'm sorry, my summary of the developers' project. Switching over to these slides. So this is substantially similar to the chart that I showed you for the previous presentation. I won't go through it in the same level of detail, but I will highlight the key numbers for you. So for this project, they're requesting the use of the LCRA tool. Sales tax exemption on the construction materials. Projected benefit to the developers, $5.2 million, which is 2.5% of their total project cost here. And then the real property tax abatement on just the apartments at 75%, which the developer pointed out, for 25 years. pointed out, for a 25-year period, this is the projected benefit to the developer from cost savings. This project, then, would also use a TIF plan, a CID, and a TDD. The TIF plan consists of these three numbers. The pilots, developers' projection is $3.6 million benefit, which is 1.8% of the total project cost. Economic activity taxes substantially more than the pilots, at about 8.8 million, which is 4.3% of total project cost. And then this super TIF component, which the developers labeled a sales tax rebate, this is a unique aspect of this request. So if you think about the normal capture of economic activity taxes, I've explained to you that in any project where TIF is approved, 50% of those sales tax dollars are captured. The developers requesting through this line item that the city's sales tax dollars that would not be captured, that uncaptured 50%, is used to pay for the land that the city would be purchasing for the fieldhouse. So this number here comes from the uncaptured 50% of all of the city's sales taxes for a period of up to 23 years, capped at $4.6 million, combined with a cash payment of $550,000 from the Parks Department to purchase the land where the fieldhouse would be located. So if you recall in the previous discussion, I explained how a component of that incentive request was woven into the fieldhouse. It's more so in this case because the developers' request is specifically to use this uncaptured sales tax dollars generated by their project to flow to the developer over a period of time such that, one, the net present value of that revenue stream reaches $4.6 million, they have been repaid for the land that the city purchases for the fieldhouse. Then the CID and the TDD, a new 1% CID and a half percent TDD, also to fund public improvements. Now, you'll see this number here, this 21 million, sort of stands out in this column, very large number. And I'll talk about that in a moment. I'll relate that back to the introduction of my presentation and the previous slides that I walked through. This is now my recasting of the developers' budget. And one thing that I did for the project is I included the parks component. So the developers' budget, if you look at their projections and all their numbers, they did not factor in the cost of the fieldhouse, like you saw with the previous project. So I've done that for them, which is how I get to the 206 million total project costs, including the cost of the fieldhouse, which would be funded by the Parks Department. So to back up to this slide, this total down here, 206 million, I factored in the fieldhouse in my calculation of the total benefit flowing to the developer from these incentives, including that land purchase component here, in order to have an apples-to-apples comparison to the previous project and other projects. As you saw with the previous project, they factored in the fieldhouse funded by the Parks Department. I've done that in this case, so you have a more clear understanding of the total project costs and how I calculated them. This is the CID map that the developers proposing. Now, you'll notice the key difference between the city's LCRA map and this map is we include the bulk of the property along 291 South. Their proposal also includes what I'll call the eastern arm, that includes Home Depot and other retailers in this area, and it also includes the western arm. Yes, is for this CID to include this area, including Home Depot, and this area over here, just including Hy-Vee, as a revenue generator for reimbursement to the developer and for reimbursement to the city. So that's an important issue for the city to consider. Let's see. I think that's all I wanted to point out on the map. That's something that obviously we'll be discussing. And then this, second to last slide I have, this, now we get into the CID. So if you think back to the presentation I recalled from November, this is my explanation of the developers' request and what we had in mind. So I'll walk through this. Developers' request for the use of the CID funds during years 1 through 10 is that the developer receives 100% of the CID revenues to reimburse them for public improvements. Their calculation of the net present value of that revenue stream for 10 years is about $12.4 million, which will fund the public improvements associated with the developers' project. Then the developers' proposal is, during years 11 and beyond, up to year 27, which is the maximum duration of a CID, the developer receives 75%, and the city receives 25% of that revenue stream. And this would be the net present value reimbursement to the city, starting in year 11, flowing out to year 27. Now, calling back to the presentation that I started with from November, this is more along the lines of what the city staff had in mind. During years 1 through 10, there would be possibly a 50-50 revenue sharing split between the developer and the CID. Our original vision of how this CID would work is that we would engage in this revenue sharing within each discrete project as it comes forward. To be clear, the developers' calculations are the entirety of the CID. So the revenue not generated within their project, but including the Hy-Vee and including the eastern arm, the Home Depot area, is factored into the developers' calculations. If you went more with our approach, then the city would be receiving half of all the dollars, generating a net present value of about $6.2 million for the city, and that would be reimbursement for those 291 North interchange costs that we have incurred. So the 4.1 million that we have already spent on the Troop A relocation and the anticipated cost overruns for the interchange, that's what this dollar amount would reimburse the city for if we use this approach. Like I said, this is more in keeping with what we had in mind. Developers' request is here, and this is what we're thinking here. And ultimately, our thinking is also the developer would be reimbursed, but the city would be, at a higher priority, would receive reimbursement through the first 10 years, and that's a significant difference between what the developers requesting and what we had in mind specifically for the CID. I guess the last thing that I will note is, I would agree with the developers' conclusion that this is pay-as-you-go, there's no request to issue debt. So to the extent that the project does not generate the returns the developers projecting, developer would bear that impact. It would not be an impact to the city. That would be less reimbursement revenue to the developer. There's low risk to the city because we're not being requested to issue debt. It would be pay-as-you-go, which is exactly how the Streets of West Prior project is operating today and operating successfully. So that concludes my comments, and be happy to answer questions and have discussion.
Great. All right. We'll get started with, if I could make a comment real quick, before Councilmember Demoral makes comments. I think it's important to say this now. Mr. Pennington, thank you for being gracious in your opening comment, because this is kind of unique for us to have two very highly qualified development groups with really good projects that could serve as catalysts for the 291 corridor. And thank you for allowing, giving the grace to the other developer that came in earlier, and shows a lot of class. So we appreciate that. So thank you. With that being said, Councilmember Demoral.
Thank you, Mayor Protam. I just have a couple really fast questions. David, if you would put up the regional CID, I just need some clarification, because there's a lot of red on there. And it looks as though, if you go down to Purcell's, that part of, is that part of the church that is involved?
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah, I'll let the developer answer that.
Okay. All right, Matt. Thank you. Thank you.
Yes, both churches are involved on either side. They've been a great neighbor to us. We've worked with them on easements, not only on our detention basin, but working with access with them out of their facility, just because of the number of people that are part of it. But yeah, that's why they're included. We're just looking at them as a complete part of the project, and they, you know, they're a big stakeholder here in the city, creating value to the CID.
So they would be a complete benefactor of the CID, rather than, I mean...
They would be a benefactor for the project to go.
Yeah. They don't sell anything.
Right.
Nobody would be charged 1%.
Yeah, I don't think, yeah, I don't know if they're charging on coffee over there on Sunday, but...
Yeah. I just had to say that, yeah. But no, they would be a benefactor rather than a, yeah.
Yeah, both sides would be, both churches, park and abundant.
Thank you, Matt. One more question, David. And so, the purchase of the property for the fieldhouse would be essentially some of the portion of our sales tax. So what we're doing is we're actually paying for the land upfront, well, not upfront, but for 23 years, rather than taking out of general revenue and paying for it. I mean, it's almost the same thing. We would have been paying with it for some kind of a tax, anyway.
Yeah, I think that's probably a fair way to state it. One scenario for the transaction would be more of a standard transaction. Here's the price, here's the land, the city pays X, the city receives the land, straight real estate transaction. Their proposal is 550,000 in cash upfront to purchase the land, the city receives title to the land, and then the remainder of the payment comes from that source, the super TIF source, over a period of up to the life of the TIF, depending on how long it takes to pay back.
We're on an installment plan?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you. That's all I have for right now. I may have more later. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Shields.
So my first question would be kind of piggybacking off of Councilmember Demoral's comment. It seems to me, just for clarity, the only thing that really is different there is that instead of the parks tax paying for the land, it would be coming mostly out of revenues that would otherwise flow into the general fund? I know it's all the city, but it's kind of taking some of this park expense and putting it more on the city as a whole?
That's correct. And also, in addition to the general fund, our special purpose taxes, like the transportation sales tax, the capital improvement sales tax, the request is to use the uncaptured portion of all five city sales taxes as a repayment source. So the general sales tax and the specific purpose taxes also.
As far as the price per square foot, the 1250 a foot, how does that compare to what we would expect to pay for, you know, graded land stubbed out with utilities in that vicinity? I know it's hard to say based on the exact location, but I'm just trying to get an idea of, is that a fair market price, or is this more trying to fill a hole in a budget?
So that's a question that we will have to answer as we proceed. One of the things that we will need to make sure that we're complying with is we're paying fair market value. It'd be inappropriate, from a constitutional standpoint, for the city to pay more than fair market value. We're collecting data right now regarding what the city's either paid or received from its previous transactions, and I think we'll be looking at, if this project moves forward, we'll be looking at additional data. So in addition to the data on the city's sales and purchases of land, we'll be looking at other comparables, and essentially doing more homework to make sure that we have a solid answer on that question if this proceeds.
I guess it's not fair to put you on the spot, but do you feel like this is in the realm of reasonable, or, but you need to kind of...
Yes. Yeah, I think it's within the realm of reasonable, but I want to see some more data to make sure that we're drilling down.
It's not sticking out to you as a huge outlier at this point?
No.
Okay. I appreciate that. Thank you. The off-site CID, is this something that we do very often, like a CID that impacts other existing businesses that aren't part of this transaction, like just imposing it on them? Is that something that, because I don't feel like it's something I've seen a lot of?
I would agree. It hasn't been done a lot. One notable place that it's been done in Lee's Summit is the Summit Woods project. There's the Western Gateway TDD that's overlaid over Summit Woods, which pays for the View High Interchange and the road network that's being built for the Paragon Star project. So if I had that map, you would see that the boundaries look somewhat like this. It's over the Summit Woods project, and then the arm extends down, and it includes the region that's the Paragon Star project. That's one example where we've done this before. That was a Transportation Development District, not a CID. One of our neighboring cities, Independence, I worked on a couple, multiple projects there, one of which was a community improvement district that extends along Nolan Road from Highway 40 on the south, all the way up to Truman Road near City Hall on the north, which is over a two-and-a-half-mile stretch. That's another example of a very, very long CID that was formed by Independence. There's other examples of that, both TIF areas and CIDs that I've worked on for the city of Independence in the vicinity of the two interstates, the mall area, Crackerneck Creek area, Bass Pro, all of those quadrants. There's a lot of meandering boundaries in that area, if you're looking for other examples. I would agree, it hasn't been done a lot, but I can point to some examples.
And from a legal standpoint, how does this get imposed? Does it require like a majority of property owners, a majority of the acreage, or who can agree to impose something like this?
So the petition can be filed with the city if it meets two signing requirements. The petition has to be signed by more than 50% of the property owners by headcount, and more than 50% of the property owners measured by assessed value. So when the petition's presented to the city, what we do every time, and it's usually never an issue, because it's usually one or just, it's a smaller area we're talking about, those two 50-50 requirements are usually satisfied without question. In this case, we will need to make sure that if the CID petition is filed, more than 50% by headcount and more than 50% by total assessed value of all properties and the boundaries of the CID, we've met those two signing requirements for the petition to move forward.
And do you know if those other major existing retailers have any strong opinions about this one way or the other?
I do not know that. My understanding is the developer's been in discussion with at least one of them, but we have not. This is the first time we're seeing this issue presented publicly, and we would have to have more discussions if this moves forward.
And is there much benefit to those other kind of outlying parcels? I know there was any kind of like the whole sewer district, sewer area, and to be honest, I didn't follow 100% all of it. So like, is Hy-Vee going to benefit from these improvements? Is Aldi going to benefit from these improvements?
So, starting over on the eastern arm, that's probably more easily answered. One of the issues that we dealt with when we were putting together our package, our funding package, financing package for the 291 North interchange project, a question that the city council asked, I don't, it may have been some of you, I honestly don't remember who asked, but the point was, why aren't we doing more in the area south of the interchange that we're improving? Why aren't these businesses participating in some fashion in the funding source because they are directly benefited by this new interchange? This would obviously do that. This would be a new one-cent sales tax on these retail businesses, which would reimburse the city for these costs here, and also reimburse the developer for costs that benefit the CID area. So that's the best answer I can provide for the eastern arm. As to the western arm, developers indicated, I can tell you that Hy-Vee is in the sewer shed, it would be benefited by the sewer improvements here. That's about the extent of the engineering-type analysis I can provide. I need somebody else on city staff to speak to Hy-Vee and its inclusion in the sewer shed and its benefits, if you want a more detailed answer on that point.
And I'd say, if the developer wants to add to that, yeah, absolutely.
So there's a new company now that we use on a lot of our retailers called Placer AI, and it pings all your cell phones, follows you. You can buy that data. And so we did that. And it shows that a lot of patrons of Hy-Vee are using Oldham Parkway, they're using 291 in and out. And so it is a benefit, not only from the interchange itself, but Oldham Parkway.
Fair answer. And I know we're in still kind of conceptual stage, but if we move forward on this, that's something that I would want to dig into a little bit more, is how this affects those property owners that are kind of far outside of this area. I just want to understand it better. Because I understand that legally you can do it, I just want to understand if it feels right to impose this assessment on them, are they actually getting some kind of additional benefit out of it?
Yeah, I mean, that's exactly the policy issue, and I suppose then you'd have to turn to the more sort of engineering analysis for this, which is, how do each of these properties benefit by the improvements that are being constructed? That is certainly a question that you will need fully answered if this proceeds.
Yeah. And like I said, I get this is conceptual, I don't expect you to have all those answers right now, but that's kind of my big question. As far as what you presented about the CID doing like a 50-50 split up front versus 100% to the developer at first, and then 75% later, obviously I like the city's version of that better. I think this is, overall, I think this is a really good project. I think, similar to the one that we talked about earlier, this is the intersection of two highways, it's an area that should be developed well. So I want to see that happen, I want to see this project happen. So I just want to preface my comments with that, that like I have some, you know, questions about how exactly the CID is structured, how exactly this whole off-site CID works. I think overall, the incentive request is within range, and to me, it makes sense to be a little bit on the higher end of the range with this, because this is a truly blighted area. Like, that makes sense to me, that we're putting more resources into remediating this area so that a prime location in our city actually can be developed and unlock some other areas for development, that it really doesn't make sense to not. But I would just want to drill into some of those details a little bit more. But I see there's a lot of public benefit to this public infrastructure that's going to go in, like remediation. I'm fine with the multifamily component. If the fieldhouse didn't go here, I'd be fine with more multifamily going in there. Rooftop support, retail, they give folks a place to live, they can open up homeownership for other folks, that when you have an empty nester move out of their home and into an apartment when they're ready to downsize, that opens up a single-family home for a young family. So like, that's kind of how I look at this, is a kind of comprehensive view of living. So like that's kind of how I look at this, is a kind of comprehensive view of living in our city. So it'd be, you know, if the field house elects to locate here, I think that would be great, but otherwise, putting more housing there, I think would also be great. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Pryor.
Thank you. Can someone opt out of a CID if they want to? Well, because I remember we had one development that was a CID and then they were going to see if Andys wanted to be a part of the CID or if they didn't want to be a part of the CID. So they were given the option to opt out, but can businesses opt out?
I think in that instance, the developer, the company that was advancing the CID went to the business and basically said, you know, in or out, what's your preference? That's how it happened in that case. In this case, the answer, the answer goes back to the way I explained the CID is formed. If a CID petition is filed and it meets those signing requirements, and if you approve that CID, and if the sales tax vote, there's a separate election for the sales tax that occurs amongst the property owners, but if that sales tax vote passes amongst those property owners, then the sales tax goes into effect uniformly throughout the CID regardless of who signed the petition.
And I'm personally not against the CID just because of the benefit we will get by this area developing. I really like this development. This area is so ugly and it's such a main corridor and so many people travel. I think it would bring in people from all over, as far as Warrensburg and then it's easy access to 470. I think it makes a lot of sense to put the field house here, in my opinion, just because of Harris Park and the big water park and I just, it just seems like a good location. So I'm excited to see this area develop. I know that you bring good businesses here, we have places that otherwise we wouldn't have with Streets of West Pryor. So, yeah, I like this and I'm excited for it. Thank you.
You. Councilmember Lovell.
Thank you. Mr. Bushak, I just had a question on that. I guess it would be the west or eastern side there where the QuickTrip is, so that part of the CID.
Yes.
So if I'm understanding correctly, and correct me if I'm wrong, but some of that money being collected is to the benefit of the city, right, for offsetting some of those costs, right? Was that in that, kind of the pro forma that you put before us, like the incentive?
Yes.
Request? So like in the grand scheme of that 24%, is that, or is that, is that being calculated in that number you showed us?
I'm not quite sure what your question is.
Or is that separate? You were talking about the interchange and the cost to the city, like that we've incurred from the relocation of the highway patrol and all of that, right? And there's money that we're obligated, part of that CID being captured there, some of that money's getting redirected to us to offset those costs?
So, Councilmember Lovell, the $21 million that's shown on this right here, this CID, that is just their portion of the CID capture. That does not include the reimbursement for those interchange costs. Those reimbursements for those interchange costs would, in their proposal, would come out of that 25% that the CID would generate between years 11 and 27.
Gotcha.
So it is not included in that $21 million.
Okay.
Thanks.
But if we don't do that, otherwise we don't have the funding source for that? Is that kind of like we don't?
Well, so the city has approved a TIF plan in the area on the north side of the 291 North Interchange. So whatever new restaurant or commercial development happens on the site where the highway patrol is vacating, that will be in the TIF area, the QuickTrip will be in the TIF area, the restaurant that's already open, that's in the TIF area. So there is a reimbursement source for the city. The CID would be an additional reimbursement source for the city, with the idea being that hopefully the city's made whole for the true pay relocation costs and at least the cost overruns for the interchange project.
Gotcha. If we go back to the other slide with the CID image, so then, so like 25, 26, 27, 28, and 29, right? So we're, we think that this development helps unlock future development on that side, right? And that there is critical infrastructure that we're providing, or the developers providing in that space that would not be needed. I mean, there's still going to be critical infrastructure and things probably over there, but I'm thinking like a future use on that space, it would cost less, I guess, but if that use went in and it generated sales taxes, that's going back to the other developer, they would not be able to capture it if they need it. That would not be a funding source for them to use.
I agree with everything you said, except the last point is a negotiable point.
Okay.
So the, this reimbursement amount here that the developer is projecting is based on only the businesses that are either open or they're going to open in this area. That reimbursement to the developer and the projection of reimbursement to the city doesn't count anything that might happen over here. So that would be additional revenue that would provide additional reimbursement. And whether any of the revenue from the east side of 291 flows to this developer is a negotiable point.
And then I think you answered this, but there is benefit to surrounding areas, not, well, obviously what the city would need to do or like improving the infrastructure there, like whether it helps Hy-Vee or not, that's like, yes, some road maybe, but like as far as, are any of these other developments, like something would have to happen there eventually anyway, so like we're...
I think that's probably true. So the developers indicated that their sewer improvements will benefit this property over here, will allow development to proceed in terms of solving sewer issues. There will obviously have to be some sort of road network that's constructed over here, there will be other public improvements associated with development of the east side. But I would agree that it's correct that funding these sewer improvements will benefit this property and enhances the likelihood of that developing, just like these interchange projects, the whole design by the city was, it enhances the redevelopability of this entire area and raises all boats.
Anything that comes off future CIP projects that maybe we are projecting for down the road that we would not have to account for now because of this?
I don't know the answer to that.
Mr.?
No? I'm seeing, well, I'll let Ryan answer this question.
So from a sanitary sewer perspective, the sanitary sewer master plan has identified this area as, again, needing these improvements for growth to occur. So it's a, eventually, it's a, it's a timing, it would become a timing issue for the sanitary sewer aspects of it. As far as the roadway network through there, that would be all development driven per our standard process, so not necessarily a CIP project.
All right. I think that's it. I mean, I, you know, I'd certainly trust our team as they're vetting these revenue sources and what to account for. You know, I do think it's unique and it is a portion of the city, it's highly visible, ease of access to our downtown Lee's Summit. You know, I think the rec center or the field house makes a lot of sense, certainly more details to hash out, but you know, you take an area that, you know, this is where it gets tough up here, but I think these are the decisions that have to be made, it's like, if not this, then what, right? And so like this is where we have to make this decision and if we're able to use these tools and use them in a reasonable fashion, we can take something that would probably otherwise just be industrial and it would just kind of look cold and hard for the foreseeable future. And so this is where we've got to put on our caps and say, you know, what do we want this area to be and what are we willing to work with the developer to do? And so I, you know, I just, I like the commitments, I like the credibility of the developer, proven track record, not just in Lee's Summit, not just in the greater Kansas City area, but you know, a group that's done what they say they're going to do. And then when we got further along, like I might, you know, I might get into more aesthetics and things like that, I like to see as we kind of hash this out, but I would say this is a really neat opportunity for us that we've been, we've been hoping for, for a long time and I would be in support of that and also the field house be in position right there too, if we can make it work, so, thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Carla.
Thank you. So I have, first I have just a really odd question. In your drawing here, this red between five and six, why is that out? That little arm where it's not included?
That is a homeowner, I believe.
Okay, that makes sense.
Yeah.
Sorry. Okay, now back to what I was going to say, that was just really bothering me. So I think this development looks great. That area of 291 has been ugly for a lot of years. It's not in my district, so I've not really had to take complaints on it per se, but I know that we've had a lot of issues over there with some businesses and different homeowners, so it would be nice to have that looking pretty. And if we're going to put apartments anywhere in Lee's Summit, I think putting them up against the highways is a great idea. So that works fantastic for me. And I don't remember if you said this or not, but maybe I caught it. The acreage on this development, did you say 50 something? 55 acres, okay. And then, as far as, as far as the TIF request, you know, we've done, we've done TIFs much higher than this. Total incentive package, again, we've done much higher than this. I'll leave it to the city and you guys to hash out how all that works if this moves forward. So I really don't have a problem with that. I mean, having to take up all of the ugly that you're fixing, I understand takes a lot of money. It's not, it's not pretty green fields and trees there, so I understand that's going to take a lot of money to put back to what would be zero. So I really don't have an issue with that. Other than that, I mean, it looks great. Other than, you know, all of the food places that you put up there, I probably won't eat that, but thank you for that, it's great. Thank you.
Thank you. So before I make comments, I think we've heard from almost everyone except Councilmember DeMoro and Councilmember Rader. You give us kind of just thumbs up or, I've heard from, well, Councilmember Hodges. Councilmember DeMoro.
Thank you. I, I had said I was going to circle back around, so, I'm circling back around. I do, I do like this project.
Oh, you're paying.
I do like the aspect of blighted area. It's been a blighted area for as long as I can remember, even when it was a working car sales place, it seems like. And I do appreciate you taking the initiative of going in and making something out of nothing. I know it's going to take a lot of work. I do like the commercial components, appreciate the LOIs. The, you know, you have to, have to consider the past history of your development here in Lee's Summit and how successful that was and the possibility of duplicating that project is a plus, a major plus. So, and I do, I do actually prefer this location with the field house in proximity to the park and the water feature there, the Summit Waves and Harris Park. And actually, I think access would be easier here too. So, so it's a good project, I'm on board. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hodges.
Thank you. I am excited about this project. I, okay, so when I said not to repeat restaurants, you picked the one that needs to be repeated, the only one in Lee's Summit. So if you have kids and you go to the Lee's Summit Chick-fil-A, you know you need a second one in Lee's Summit, so nailed that one. I'm excited, I'm excited for another barbecue place. And then I do, I mean, just from your previous developments, I have full faith that you're going to bring us something that's not going to be more of the same with those other projects that you've mentioned, so I have full faith in that. And I'm excited about what those may be. But yeah, I mean, I'm, I love it. I'm, of course, I always say up here, I'm not a fan of multifamily, but I do feel like in this instance, it's one time where I would say I'm willing to compromise on that and I'm thankful that you did settle on the 300, and I think you said 306, rather than more. So I'm grateful for that, but I'm willing to sacrifice that for the greater good of getting things that I know that our city wants and needs, so I'm excited.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Rader.
Thank you. It's a beautiful project and it's well needed and you guys have been great partners with Lee's Summit. I'm going to be the black sheep of the family again and I'm going to say, I'm not for the multifamily apartments, I'm for multifamily, townhomes, condos, that type of thing. And then I just want to address Councilmember Shields' comment about the seniors and what's, in theory, you would think that the seniors, we have lots of apartments around here to live in, so you'd think that seniors would move into them, but they really don't. And if they did, we'd solve a lot of our inventory problem. But that's one thing, I think seniors is kind of a separate thing. This would be a great place for young people though, to live. So, other than that, I think it's beautiful, I think it'll be a perfect place for the field house if Parks decides to do that because of the visibility and appreciate you guys being here always, so thank you.
Thank you. All right, so I think we're seeing a trend, but let me just kind of try to recap. And to me, anytime you have any type of development project that comes into any community, I think these kind of, these kind of words were mentioned earlier at some point, either by someone up here or someone presenting, you know, timing is always, timing is always important, one of the key elements for a development site. And overall, I think this site, this concept, I think kind of as our, people have already made the point, it's a gateway project, it's a catalyst type project. All the things that you look at for LCRA and the reasons the TIF statute was created, this site fits that. I think that's obvious. It's also part of a lot of planning that the city's done, very strategic planning, like the Envision Plan, which some of us up here served on Planning Commission and a couple of us were actually involved in that process with the Planning Commission. So the blight removal tied into an existing LCRA district and a plan, which needs to be fleshed out a little bit. There's still some questions, I think, pretty obvious with the questions, line of questions that were asked up here. It's been said many times that the history, the pedigree of the developer, track record in this community, I don't want to repeat that again, but obviously you've established a lot of credibility here, your team has. I'm typically not a fan personally of super TIF, I don't like using that word. I think that, that could be, could be a negative message sometimes. You know, TIF itself sometimes is, causes concern for people, but I think in this case, there are exceptions. I think in this case, because the true benefit, I think Councilmember DeMoro said it, it's like, it's like, what'd you say, pay, pay as you, what'd you say? Well, that wasn't exactly, anyway, we're going to pay it back over time, installment, that's what he said, installment, yeah. It's going, what's the public benefit? It's helping our park department continue our vision of providing quality services and facilities. So in this case, I can live with it, just maybe needs to be massaged a little bit, the numbers. The regional CID, I'll say it again, I think there's a lot of questions on that, maybe some concerns, or maybe not concerns, but things need to be kind of cleaned up a little. It'd be nice if you all come back to give us an idea what the west and the east neighbors, you know, maybe give us, if they can be here, or they can give us their input on how they feel about them being included. I get it though. I think I was one of the ones that had asked, you know, what's going to happen with, as far as 291, the new interchange that's being redone over on 291 and 50 Highway on the west end of this district? What's going to happen to the businesses on the south side? And I think that's what you all are trying to address, so I think that's good foresight. And if we can tie it in and clean up those numbers with the regional approach, I think that, that needs to be fleshed out again, I said it three times now. Other than that, I think you have a pretty good idea of kind of a consensus of how we feel up here. So, you know, you all can go back with Mr. Bushak and our staff and our team and just clean some things up and I think... and just clean some things up, and I think, I think this community's ready for, for this concept. Anything else? Hope that helps, appreciate you guys being out here. All right, thank you. All right, keep going? All right.
Not much left.
Not much left, we can power through. All right. So we'll keep battling. Takes us to agenda item number seven, which is the proposed ordinances forwarded from committee. We have item number seven A, Councilmember Demora, could you please read for a second reading?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I move to advance the second reading bill number 24-081, an ordinance accepting an energy efficient and conservation block grant award for an energy assessment and upgrade to our, of energy systems from the United States Department of Energy to the city of Lee Summit, Missouri, and authorizing the mayor to execute any agreements or other documents for the same.
All right, thank you. We have the motion that has been made by Councilmember Demora, and we have a second by Councilmember Carlisle. Do you have any discussion, any questions? See and hearing none? Please cast your vote. All votes are in. Please record the vote. Thank you. Councilmember Demora, could you please read for adoption?
And I move for adoption, bill number 24-081, an ordinance approving an Microsoft Enterprise Agreement government through reseller SHI Corp. for a volume licensing program and the purchase of cloud services and software licenses under one agreement from Microsoft 365, and authorizing the city manager to execute the same for the city.
Awesome. Thank you. Motion's been made by Councilmember Shields, second by Councilmember Rader. Do we have any questions, comments? None? Please cast your vote. All votes are in. Passes eight, zero, one, one absent. All right. Takes us to item number seven B, Councilmember Shields.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I move for second reading, bill number 24-082, an ordinance approving a Microsoft Enterprise Agreement government through reseller SHI Corp. for a volume licensing program and the purchase of cloud services and software licenses under one agreement from Microsoft 365, and authorizing the city manager to execute the same for the city.
Awesome. Thank you. Motion's been made by Councilmember Shields, second by Councilmember Carlisle. Any questions, comments? See and none? Please cast your vote. All votes are in. Please record, record the vote. Thank you. Now, Councilmember Shields, please read for adoption.
Thank you. I now move for adoption of bill number 24-082, an ordinance approving a Microsoft Enterprise Agreement government through reseller SHI Corp. for a volume licensing program and the purchase of cloud services and software licenses under one agreement from Microsoft 365, and authorizing the city manager to execute the same for the city.
Thank you. Motion's been made again for adoption by Councilmember Shields, second by Councilmember Rader. Any questions, comments? See and none? Please cast your vote. All votes are in. Please record, record the vote. Thank you. All right. Takes us to item number C, seven C, Councilmember Lovell.
Thank you. I move for second reading, bill number 24-083, an ordinance approving the statement of work for professional services to facilitate the implementation of Microsoft 365 by ConvergeOne, and authorizing the city manager to execute the same for the city.
Thank you. Motion's been made by Councilmember Lovell, second by Councilmember Shields. Do you hear any questions or comments? See and none? Please, please cast your vote. All votes are in. Please record it. Thank you. Councilmember Lovell for adoption.
I move for adoption, bill number 24-083, an ordinance approving the statement of work for professional services to facilitate the implementation of Microsoft 365 by ConvergeOne, and authorizing the city manager to execute the same for the city.
Thank you. Motion's been made. We have, by Councilmember Lovell, second by Councilmember Rader. See no comments or questions? Please cast your vote. All votes are in. Please record the vote. Thank you. All right, we're moving. So if you all remember, agenda management, we're not doing items A or B tonight, so we'll go straight to committee reports. Councilmember Shields.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I believe we are going to need to cancel the May 20 Finance and Budget Committee special meeting. We won't have a quorum, and the new committee hasn't been appointed yet, so we'll need to figure out an alternate solution for that. Congratulations, buddy, I think this means that you just won't have to deal with it at all, so, since this will be after your retirement, so, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. Councilmember Demora.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. We had a public works meeting last night. Assorted, assorted readings we had, and, but, nothing, nothing that I can, I should comment on. I mean, it was pretty, pretty regular stuff, but we did have wildlife management ordinance, though, so we can take care of the Northland Airport. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate that. All right, council comments? No one? Councilmember Demora.
All right, thank you, Mayor Protem. Due to substantial repositioning of boards and, and commissions over time, the last few years, buying a lot, there's been a lack of information on the undertakings of those bodies to the council, as well as many constituents. I get constituent calls and wonder why they can't see things, or, you know, and, and the purpose and accomplishments of those boards are what people are looking at. And at what ti, at one time, back when we passed a resolution in 2021, technology was a limiting factor for video and archiving, but since then, we've, we have enhanced capability, we've also added personnel, and I would like to request you, as Mayor Protem, to send the current resolution 21-09 to a committee that you deem appropriate. This particular resolution did not come from, was not advanced from a, a, a committee, so you would have to figure out which one to send it to. And, and just send, send it to a committee for discussion, possible action to revise the list of broadcasting and/or video archiving certain public meetings. Thank you.
Sure, thank you. I'm happy to do so. Mr. Dunning, want to address any of that?
So, I understand twenty, resolution 2109 was a point in time where there was discussion about which committee, which citizen boards and commissions were we videotaping, and, and my recollection is, it was council committees, certainly council meetings, like TIF Commission, Planning Commission.
TIF Commission, Planning Commission.
There may be some others. I, I remember.
Parks and Rec.
Yep. So, I think that's what you're asking, is just revisit that?
Revisit that.
And see if that's still what we want, or do we want to add more, and so?
We've combined several, so, so the list has actually gotten smaller, but yet, they have combined to the fact that, you know, people are interested, people, if, if somebody was interested in, in the old committee and was combined with two more, they're still interested in that old committee, but they're also interested in the two new ones, too, that are combined to it.
You're talking about just to keep up with the meetings and the information?
Well, video archiving. I, I would, you know, we, we could, that way they could watch the meetings.
Right.
I'm, I'm looking for transparency and giving, giving the public information, and council members. I mean, I'd like to go back and watch meetings, too.
Sure. Mr. Head, is that administrative, or is that something that needs to be handled by?
I think it, it, it does need to be something that would be handled by the council. Previously, it was, was handled by the council as a whole, but going to a committee is certainly inappropriate, it's an appropriate action.
Okay, all right.
And we were in COVID then, too. I mean, we were meeting.
Right.
Usually by Zoom then.
Okay. Okay, so noted. I know a guy. We'll get it assigned. Okay, thank you, appreciate that.
Thank you.
All right, staff roundtable.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Couple items, kind of tagging on to the graduation ceremonies, we do have many members of our organization that have attended Leadership Lee Summit, and this Friday, they will graduate from that program. So we have Donna Lake, Assistant City Manager, Carrie Coleen in the Police Department, Devin Blazek in Parks, Sarah Miller in Water, Jeff Thorne in Water, and then our newly-elected municipal judge, Vanessa Maxwell Lopez, also is graduating, so a number of folks graduating from the Leadership Lee Summit program. Congratulations to them, there's, I think the graduation is this Friday. And then Betty was mentioned earlier, this will likely be Betty's last in-person, in-person council meeting, so I think it's proper to recognize her years of service. She's been seven-plus years with us, but a very esteemed career in municipal finance, I should say, government finance throughout her career, over 40 years worth, starting at the state, let's see, she was at the Office of the Missouri State Treasurers as the Director of Investments. She spent a couple of years as the Finance Director in Jefferson City, and then a number of years at, for the Treasure of Columbia, Treasure of Columbia, Missouri, and then we were, we were fortunate to, to have her succeed Conrad Lamb, his many years of service here at the city, and she's done a wonderful job for us. As, as you all know, we are in a great position financially, and, and a lot of that is due to our leadership in finance, so we thank Betty for an impressive career in, in public service, her leadership, and we wish her well in, in retirement. And I'd say this, Betty, you know where to find our, our review of our financial audits online, and so in your free time, feel free to dig in. But Betty, thank you so much for your leadership.
She's been great to work with, and she's going to be missed, for sure. So thank you. Anything else, Mr. Dunning? All right, great, so you guys want to hang out longer?
Yeah.
adjourned? All right, this meeting's adjourned.